Alrighty, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna start our October the 19th meeting of the City Council here in City Hall. It is a few minutes after six, so we're gonna go ahead and hold the meeting in order. Mr. Morrison, would you mind doing the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and her God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Callen?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Okay, I have two cards under public participation on agenda items. That's not marked, oh, it is an agenda item. These are not marked for an agenda item, but it is in it.
I think they're all marked number 11.
I got two here unmarked, or purchase a building.
Okay.
That's number 11.
It's up in public hearing. Six A and B. Mr. Garganese, would you get on this one? Would I need to get those for the agenda item? Yes. We got this on item number 11, or no, item six.
Not that participation.
On the agenda, it's six A and B.
Yeah, hold on a second. Yeah, we approved the contract at the last meeting, right? Yeah, so, I mean, that's probably should be under just open?
Open discussion?
Discussion, okay. Yeah, I had said to check something in my head.
Okay, I'm just wondering, I'm sure we're right. Okay, I have two cards here, one from Belinda Roland. Come up to the microphone, please, and state your name, and you have the floor now. Good evening.
We are the tenants. We're on the tenant end of the building that you guys are gonna purchase, right? And the reason why we're here is because we're concerned, even though on last meeting, right, you guys voted that we could stay up to a year, we're not sure if that's gonna happen or not. Because actually, the owner of the building told us that you guys sent them an email to check more about us, to see if we qualify not to stay. So we're kind of worried in that part. Other than that, I'm really nervous. Other than that, we're also worried because even though we find a place to relocate our business, which we love, we would love to stay in Cape Canaveral, we don't have the funds, nothing saved up for deposit or whatever we need. We're not asking for a lot of money, it's not that, we just want to keep running and working. And really, that's our concern, you know, we won't, just like me and Smiley, that's here too. He's the other one he's gonna speak to, but we're very worried and concerned. Because this is our bread, you know, we live off of this. And it's been, we've been stressed and depressed, you know, because there's a lot of changes. And we heard about the purchase for a while, but we didn't think it was gonna happen like that. And it did happen, which is good for the city, we're happy because we live here too. And we love that, you know, you guys make it nicer. But at the same time, you know, we would love to stay in the city, to keep taking care of our people. You know, we have a lot of people that come to us, young people, older people, you know, and what can I say, you know? That's, that's it, you know? Sorry, I'm nervous. But I'm speaking from my heart, Nelson is there, who is a barber, everybody knows him by Papi. And that's about it, what can I say, you know, you guys could help us a little bit. Like, once again, we don't want money, we just want to be able to relocate. But we need money for that, because the other places can ask us too, you know? And we've been, we survived through the COVID, thank goodness, thank God, thank goodness. But a lot of our clients haven't come back also, because, you know, they're scared, older people. So we haven't been making as much as we started, but we're still surviving. And that's all we want to do, is to survive, keep surviving. We don't wanna be rich, we just wanna be happy and keep making people happy. What can I say, I might be second guess. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I got a question too, but go ahead.
Smiley?
Mr. Mayor, can, I think Councilmember Brown has a question, I do too, regarding her comments, if?
Yeah, I just didn't, you want me to wait, or?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't realize how much an integral part of the community barber shop is. I would personally want to, I don't know the legality of it, but they're good enough to stay there before us. I would think that if possible, they should be grandfathered in, that they can stay in that location till the city absolutely needs them to move. I was amazed about how many of our community actually go to the barber shop. I took my kids in there, and there are other people that live next door to me that I didn't realize utilized that same barber shop. And they, like I said, integral part of the city. I like what they're doing. I'd hate to see them move. And if we can, as a community or a city, let them stay there without all these investigations and stuff like that, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my question, this might be first out. Linda had mentioned something about it was going to be one year and then something might change. Can I?
My understanding, yeah, my understanding, at the last meeting when the City Council approved the contract to acquire the property next door, was that they were gonna be on a month-to-month basis not to exceed 12 months. So, you know, we were proceeding on that direction and doing some due diligence with making an inquiry with the current property owner, like we would do in any real estate transaction, when there are tenants that will be staying. So that's what we were doing, if the owner mentioned that there'd been some inquiries by the city, we were just doing run-of-the-mill due diligence for the closing. So our intentions were to get that information from the property owner and then prepare a lease under the terms that the council indicated. That'd be month-to-month, not to exceed 12 months. And then we would go from there, you know? What the city decides to do in the future was still an open issue, and when you wanted to proceed with the redevelopment of that property. So, you know, it's a redevelopment project, then the redevelopment agency, and, you know, to the extent that, you know, the council, you know, wanted to, you know, when the time comes and they have to relocate, because the city is implementing the relocation, or the redevelopment project, you know, relocation expenses, the city could, well, the CRA actually could consider that as a redevelopment expense to provide some small amount of assistance. When the time comes, then they have to relocate out of the building.
Okay, thank you. Let, I actually have a question for you, I just wanna clarify, do you mind coming, sorry, Smiley, if you don't mind, and I think you need to come up to the podium if the mayor's okay with that.
No.
I just wanna clarify, so you said that, because you were at the last?
Let her get to the podium, so that she can use her?
Yeah, um, thank you.
Yeah.
You were at the last meeting when this happened, and so when you walked away, it was, you walked away feeling like it would be at least a year, if I understand you, is that was, and then now you were caught off guard that it could be month-to-month, is that what your concern?
No, my concern was, like, I was saying, the owner of the building told us, I used the email from the city, like, inquiring if we qualify as the tenants to stay.
Okay.
Which, you know, I've been, we've been there for four years, Smiley for seven, so it's been a while, it's not like a new business. So that kind of caused like a little bit of fear, because the owner of the building, you know, the owner of the building, he told us about this, and I'm like, okay, so what if we don't qualify, which I hope we do?
Okay.
That was it, you know? We were worried at that part, because if we don't, then we gotta get out, and how many hours or days, we don't know. But I think, I hope we do, you know, like I said, we've been there for a while. But that was my concern, other than the moving, that we have to find a place, and the funds, whatever, is another, is another subject.
Thank you.
And that's part of my worries.
I understand now. So the lease agreement, and that was all the questions, I appreciate you clarifying that. We're good, thank you, sorry. So we have a lease agreement that we're proposing to the tenants, is that it, what I'm under?
Well, that's, that was, that's the game plan, is to, you know, the council, the original contract was, the seller was gonna convey the property to the city without the tenants. The council at the last meeting approved the contract with an amendment that the tenants can stay, month-to-month, not to exceed 12. So we made inquiry to the, to the, to the current owner, and trying to figure out, well, what's the terms and conditions of your current lease? You know, did you qualify your tenants before, before, you know, you entered into a lease? Did they give you a security deposit, do you have a security deposit on hand? Are they current on their rent? I mean, basic due diligence inquiries, that, you know, any reasonable buyer would wanna do before it took title to property with tenants, so that, that's what was going on.
Are we going to draft a new lease, or is that existing lease gonna be assigned over to the city?
I think there needs to be, my recommendation, and the direction I'm going, is, is there needs to be a new lease, based on the lease document that, that the, that the current owner has, plus the city's conditions.
Will this?
Month-to-month, you know, not to exceed.
Will this council approve that lease?
I mean, I, it's up, I don't know, did you intend to do that? I mean, it was more of an operational thing, I mean, that's something we certainly can bring back to the council.
Because what I'm hearing is?
The closing document.
I would like to have the council approve the lease, that way we can address her concerns. And, I mean, if it's going, if we're gonna be the landlord on behalf of the people for these 12 months, I think it would make sense that we vote in those terms. Obviously, whatever you recommend to present to us, because we don't need to move the, to me, the risk of, of them defaulting or not paying, I think we'll handle that, I've got my hair cut there, I've got my phone fixed at Smiley's, and I think they provide an incredible service to this community, and I'm sad to see them go. But the worst thing we could do is come in with an owner's lease contract, and I, what I'm hearing from her, she's concerned she may not qualify. And so, I understand the city needs to be protected, but I would like, at some point, whether it makes sense now or at the meeting, is that we, we have an opportunity to approve that, that lease.
I think that's the reason why we have a city attorney.
He can recommend it, but just like he recommended the contract, council approved, he recommended that the loan docs council approved, and I'm saying, he can recommend the lease agreement, we can approve.
This is council's prerogative. I will propose a commercial-grade lease. That's very similar to commercial-grade leases other municipalities I represent. So it's just gonna be a, you know, a commercial-grade lease that protects the city's interest. You know, again, a question that apparently has frightened one of the tenants is, was an inquiry about, did you qualify your tenant? It wasn't that the city was going to qualify them, it was, did you qualify them? Because we were trying to ascertain and get information from, you know, the seller. So it's council's prerogative, I mean, we'd be happy to bring the lease back to you. There wasn't any intention to change any of, like, the lease amount, unless that's what the council wants to do, but, you know, but it had, it needs to be wrapped around commercial-grade, and a little bit more, I think, better terms and conditions when it comes to protecting the landlord of an owner of a building.
I would feel better if we had a chance to review it.
Happy to.
Mayor, John Delia would like to address something.
I got a couple points that I could shed on this whole situation, in with the attorney stating about a commercial lease. I've already talked to the auditors for the city, and so, as we get closer, everything we're doing here is, you know, all subject to an audit, and we need to make sure we're conducting ourselves appropriately. So I'll, I'll be looking into all that, and working with the auditors, and then if a commercial lease is gonna be drawn up, then there's guidelines we have to go by, because, you know, cities, there are cities that have tenants, but this is uncommon in Cape Canaveral. So we will watch those guidelines, and I will work with the Community Development Director for this process. Something else I wanna bring up, and I don't wanna give false hope to the tenants, but one thing I will do is, we do have rescue money, rescue funds from the government, and I'm going to look into the use of those funds for small businesses, and see if maybe we could accommodate these business owners in helping them with relocation. I'm not guaranteeing that, but I'll talk to the right people and see if, you know, because small business, there are small business subject areas that, that could be used in the rescue money. The city has $2.6 million. Now, that's not to get anybody excited about that, but at least I'm going to take a look to see if we could help these business owners. So I just wanted to bring that up.
And Mayor, I know that we're not in the CRA board meeting right now, but there's also potential that CRA could come to help here, and perhaps that could be a subject of that workshop. There's time, remember, there's at least 12 months on this, and CRA could potentially help out this situation.
There's a maximum. We can only do what we're allowed to do at all, so.
Yeah, I think there's at least one month, at maximum, 12 months, and I think that's the concern, in addition to the other things. If it's appropriate, it sounds like all of that, just like it's standard, we have to, you know, be able to meet the guidelines and the criteria of an audit, but being this is the first time, I think the city's ever been in a landlord-tenant relationship for a one-year contract, I think it would be good that we, we have a chance to review it. And with that, I would like to make a motion that, when that lease agreement's ready, council takes it up and votes on its approval, gives the city manager the authorization to execute it.
I just, this is, I wanna point out, this is not an action item, this is just public comment here.
But I think I can make a motion now.
Yeah, well, I think you can give direction, that that item be brought back. You know, no, there's no final action on the lease, just, that's gonna have to be brought back to you, I think the closing, I can't remember the closing date, I got the calendar, I think it's in December, so this may be something that has to be done in November, because we need, you know, we need to have the lease in place prior to, prior to closing.
I'm happy to have a special meeting, it can be a 10-minute meeting.
We need a special meeting, but we, I'm just saying, probably in, in the November meeting, we would have to bring back that, that lease for you to look at.
Is it appropriate that I make a motion now?
If you would?
Okay.
I would want clear direction, as the city's attorney, that you want to see this lease before closing, because my intentions are to close this deal as stated in the contract, and I need either a executed lease by the tenants, or we got an issue.
Yeah. Anthony, can this be done without a special meeting? Can you just send a copy of the lease to all the council members, and then we go ahead and let you know our thoughts on it, or yay, nay, or what, without actually bringing everybody here?
I think we're just, I'm more than happy to put it on the agenda in November, so you all can take a look at it. I think that's.
I agree.
And then, you know, you all decide.
Yeah, I was just, November's great, I was just saying, if it, November doesn't work, it, to me, it'd be fine to even do a remote meeting, but.
Like I said, I intend to follow the council's direction under the contract, and close this deal in December, as you want it, or no later than December. And a lot of stuff has already been done, the survey's been prepared, and, you know, Level One environmental's been done, closing documents, we're getting the process of preparing those, so it's all in the works, and we're heading towards a timely closing. And we were gonna have just the lease as one of the closing documents, to make sure that that gets done too. So, yeah, I think November works, I can certainly bring it back.
Mickey, did you have some input?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanna, I think where the tenants are coming from is, they've been through the hardest year of their lives in, for small businesses, and they're worried about the qualifying part. I just hope that maybe John can find some rescue money for them, to help them, and I'm for getting a copy of the lease, and trying to take care of these tenants as much as we can, because they've had a rough year, and now they have to move. So whatever we can do to help them out, I would be for, thank you.
Thank you. I think that pretty well gives us consensus, just to have a lease to us, and you'll have this by next meeting, all ready to wrap up?
Yeah, I'll have it for you to review. No problem.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments?
Do we, but we have consensus to do it, since, okay, thank you.
Well, I brought Mrs. Callen into it to make sure how she felt. All right, we've got another card, Mr. Smiley, you're next, you heard what's gonna be done, so go ahead and.
My name is Smiley Ochoa. I've been in the community since 2014, when I opened my business here in Cape Canaveral. I've been seeing Cape Canaveral growing up. I mean, this building was not here when, when I came over here. Man, I've been working with the community, I've been helping schools, I've been doing the best I can for, for me and my family, and for the community. Now we are in this situation, it's kinda sad, when we went through a pandemic, and we survived. It's been a little hard for us, to the point that we, we don't have no saves right now to move to, to relocate to another place. I mean, I'm not against to the city or anything, I mean, I'd like to see it grow up, and I'm gonna grow up this city. At one point, I can see everybody discussion, I can hear everybody, but my point is, when everything is dark, I'm seeing like, the city wants to buy the place, and I say, okay, it's nice, but where are we at in that purchase? They don't, they don't make a plan for, let's buy the place, let's relocate these people, and then we build the park. I mean, it's, it's hard for us, hard for the leader, for me, for everybody. I mean, to the point that it's been stressful, I mean, this is the only way that I can provide for, to my family. If this happened to the point that the agreement the government is gonna make for us, we're not qualified for that agreement, we just gonna go out of business. I mean, I don't understand how you guys wanna take a building empty over there for one year, or whatever, the moment is gonna come together to turn the place down and start building. I mean, we're not asking for too much, we're just asking to relocate us. I mean, we wanna be part of Cape Canaveral, I've been here for, for seven and a half years now, and I've been trying to do my best for, for everybody. I'm one of the best repair shops in Brabard County, and I can say that, the reviews say, the people say that, and I like to work with, with everybody. I try to do my best, I try to do the best I can for me and for the community. I mean, this is hard for us right now, because we can hear, this is gonna happen, this is not gonna happen, we don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, we still in the limbo right now, till the agreement comes, or the lease comes, we don't, by this end, it's just stressful for us, you know? It's very stressful. And I just want to the, to the city, try to do the best they can for us, or try to do the fastest they can, that way we can keep doing our job. Because when we stress, we cannot start the same way we are setting to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Smiley, you heard what took place here tonight, so I'm sure they'll work their best they can. Okay, any other comments, before we close that subject and move on? Let's take care of public participation, unless somebody else has something they wanna comment on. I don't have, but some cards on item number 11, when we get there. Okay, next thing is certificate of appreciation.
Commander Walters. Good noise, Commander, it was.
Don't recognize him.
The under commander. Certificate of appreciation. And it says, this is certified, certificate is proudly presented to Commander Andrew Walters in the grateful recognition of outstanding service, public service to the city of Cape Canaveral, for his accomplishments and dedication as commander of the Har County Sheriff's Office, Canaveral Precinct, from December 14th, 2019, to October 15th, 2021. Is that correct? I won't probably be like, like Wayne does. We have a little token of our appreciation. I hope you don't, be scared. Would Council like to send that?
Sure.
If you wish.
Give me a minute.
Not leaving.
Push my chair.
It'll be around.
You have to wait a minute.
We've got plenty of time.
Smash it, man.
Three and three on. And Billy, you're?
It's your chair, it's all having.
I forgot about you, Dan.
Okay.
Mike, no, you guys are buddies. Andy, it's a great one.
I know they always get nervous when I come up here, because they have no idea what I'm gonna say, but Mickey, I'm a little disappointed you're not here, Mickey.
I know, I'm sorry to see you go, Commander, sorry.
You thought I was dead too, and I gave you a hug.
Yeah, I know.
You and Angela, we don't agree on everything, there's nothing but love. And Mickey, I truly wish you the best of luck with your golf cart.
Thank you, Andrew.
Well, this is gonna be a roast, I see.
Yeah, you should have a roast. But all sincerity is, Mayor Hoag, as we all know, is retiring from his political career in November, so I believe that's gonna be his last meeting, I don't know how many years it is, but 25, yeah. So when I started as a young deputy out here, he was out here and with, involved in the city. So he will be missed, and Mike Brown, as everybody knows, retired FHP, and we had chances to work different. So he will be missed. And Mike Brown, as everybody knows, retired FHP and we had chances to work different calls together and uh. So it's kind of nice to be retired as well, but even though I'm not retired, I'm only retired for three weeks and go back to work. But we'll stick the best for last. The best year for the city is Todd Mortley and the staff. And I truly hope, and I know elected officials come and go, that's the way politics is. But most of the staff making a career here. And you've got a lot of tenured staff here with the city of Cape Canaveral. And I know you don't have the opportunity, uh, because sunshine laws and because you'll be forbidden to go to the meetings, but when they have their city staff meetings. Which will have one tomorrow after the city council. If you had a chance to see that, how that runs and the collaboration between the different units. Within the city, you would be thoroughly impressed on how well you are served here in the city. And we all know that it it's not the elected officials that get the business done. You're responsible for making public policy. But it's the men and women that work in this building that 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 make things happen. And I just hope that uh. And I know you don't take them for granted, but truly appreciate what they do, cause you got a phenomenal team here. And if I didn't think so, honestly, I'd accepted whatever's in this box in my certificate and said thank you and left with my beautiful wife. But I wanted to make sure that Todd and Mia and John and the rest of the staff here. Uh, get recognized because they are a phenomenal group of people to work for and work with. And and that's truly what I'm gonna miss is working with the staff here. Uh, cause they've done nothing but to support the men and women in green that serve this city uh here in Cape Canaveral precinct. I can't thank you enough. But beyond that, I wish you all the best and blessings to your families. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Randy.
We will be there, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we have a proclamation for veterans of the Small Business Week. Proclamation. Whereas in two thousand fifteen, a resolution was introduced to the United States Congress to duck the gate. The first week in November as National Veterans Small Business Week. And whereas for Bar County is home to more than sixty-five thousand veterans, forty-eight hundred veteran-owned firms. For the US Census, two thousand twelve Economic Census Survey of Business Owners. And whereas there are eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-six thousand veterans own business in Florida generating fifty-seven point seven billion dollars in annual sales. Less than one half of one percent of the US population served our country and they were forced to get veteran-owned businesses. Represent nine percent of all the US firms, two thousand seventeen SBA, small businesses. And whereas the Florida Association of Veteran-Owned Businesses. Base Coast has over one hundred veteran-owned businesses and patriotic supporters, non-veteran businesses as members. And. The Florida Association of Veteran-Owned Businesses is a nonprofit entity that advocates, educates, and connects our veteran-owned businesses. To economic opportunity. And the Florida Association of Veteran-Owned Businesses and Small Business Administration. Have entered into a strategic alliance memorandum as of October twenty twenty. And each year, the US SBA celebrates, connects, and empowers service members, veterans, National Guard and Reserve members. Military spouses during National Veterans Small Business Week. And this year marks the eighth annual. NDSBW, which is Small Veterans. And National Veterans Small Week is dedicated to supporting veteran entrepreneurs and business owners and their families. And to encourage people to purchase goods and services from these hardworking men. And Florida veterans and their families deserve an unwavering support and gratitude. Therefore, I, Robert Hoag, Mayor of Cape Canaveral, of our county, do hereby proclaim the week of November first to the fifth, two thousand twenty-one as Veterans Small Business Week. In the city of Cape Canaveral, and I encourage the officers by all residents. Signed and sealed this nineteenth day of October, which was last week. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much. Thank you very much. We have the floor. Love to hear.
Just real quick, by way of introduction, my name is Stu Smith. I run a small consulting firm. I'm a proud resident of the city of Cape Canaveral. And with me is Heidi Gabriella, and she runs Skyra Aerospace Technologies. She moves over in Merritt Island. She's the secretary of Fay Bob. I am the chair of Fay Bob. And I just want to say to the mayor and to the city council, thanks very much for the recognition. Of National Veterans Small Business Week. As a token of our appreciation, I gave you that coin.
Let's go say right here in the city, believe it.
That is part of the tradition in the military to pass a unit coin from one member to the next as a uh, to signify our appreciation. And us working together to help small businesses uh grow and develop here in the state of Florida. So thank you very much.
Will I do follow the first? Thank you very much. Photo op? Where's our photo op, Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. We get into our consent agenda. We have three items. Anybody care to remove?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item number three, please.
Okay, item number three. Mickey, you with us?
Yes, Mayor.
You can hear okay?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
We have item three removed. Do you care to remove anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt items one and two of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Look for a second. Oh, second. We have a motion to adopt one and two. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Mr. Morrison, item three.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those who are paying attention, this is uh to approve uh the Presidential Streets Vision Plan. And authorize the city manager to execute it for a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. So the Presidential Streets largely made up from Washington all the way to Johnson. Avenue within Cape Canaveral. Uh, this, the council had met the strategic planning meeting. And uh, we we filled out a a survey and this was, I think, the only one that got five. All five of us council members thought that this should be a high priority. And so I think we're all excited about this happening. And so this is kind of the first step to go in and. Uh, survey the area. And we've got a a proposal here before us today um that that kind of talks about the process that the con. Consulting firm Kimberly Horn would do. Um, so I just have a few questions. I met with our city manager and I think at the time. He had recommended I bring them up here at this meeting. When we get into the process, I would like to go to page. Let's see, the page isn't numbered. Attachment three. So yes, you're there. And then go the next two pages over. Um. Page three. Actually, it's right up there in light gray. That's the one. Yeah, so council's with me here. Um. Something that I think is really important is if we do this, I was happy to see that it's going to um. Reach out and go through an outreach session. So section one point two, Public Information Outreach. Um, it says the city will be responsible for providing the meeting location, um, preparing and notifying residents. Either through newspaper ads, online notices, and or mailed notices to property owners and residents within the study area. And so this is something I think I've spoke about in the past, and I think for it to be successful. Uh, we should make sure we've got a budget, but uh for the mailing and talk about. Whether or not that's included in here. And I think that was my question is, this proposal for a hundred fifty thousand dollars for for mailed notices to get the citizens involved. That will be the responsibility of this city, if I understand this, or will that be included in the hundred fifty thousand? It's, I think, section B says the city will be responsible for creating mailing lists, postage on mailers, and associated copies for distribution. The city will also be responsible for distributing the mail notices. So we're gonna have to promulgate this, right? It's pretty much in our court.
Mayor, with your approval, Brenda's here to speak to the that question.
Hey, Brenda, welcome.
Hi. Um, the short answer is yes, we will be responsible for those costs. But it's, I wanna make it clear that it says may include. That doesn't necessarily necessarily mean that that's what we will do um to get people notified.
So will Kimberly Horn, they'll they'll us, so basically, social media, newspaper ads, we're responsible for all that.
We would work with them, but we would be responsible for coordinating the messaging to go out to all of our residents, correct?
Got it. And so what? What I am interested in is, did we use Kimberly Horn for the uh multi-generational facility that way back, the first one? When we did the needs, I mean, early stages, where they did a survey of the community? I think it was a necessity?
Gustavo, do you know?
Kimberly Horn took survey results, but that was a staff-led survey. That was not a consultant who put that survey together. So they took the results that we gave them.
Okay.
And developed the records from that.
And we had did, it was, I think, that was it, we did a workshop for that. Okay.
Yeah.
And that was the one where I think we had twelve, thirteen people.
Here, yeah.
For that. And so this is.
No, yeah, that was one of the public meetings, if that's what you're talking about.
The very first one where we, like, the first time really skate park was circulated to the community. And I think you had ran.
Ideas of what could happen there. They give us some.
Yes.
Records.
And so I'm looking over here and I'm seeing a similar thing. What I don't wanna happen is to have a low turnout. And so. When we look at a hundred, thank you, Gustavo, that was it, I think. When we're looking at a hundred fifty thousand, I just wanna be mindful that I think. We really have an opportunity here to notify the residents and put some some investment into that and be proactive. And and wanna make sure that's okay. Um, at fifty cents for roughly five, six thousand homes, we have ten thousand people, but I think it's five or six thousand homes. We're talking about two to three thousand dollars here. And so if that's what the the council wants to do and and staff. Uh, agrees, um, is that going to be okay with this plan? With what Kimberly Horn is pro- proposing today? Cause I don't, I think that instead of saying we're gonna do a public information meeting. I would like to see us change our thinking and saying, yes, we're gonna have that meeting, but we don't wanna move forward unless we have. A certain minimum level of citizen input. Um, and so, you know, a thousand. You know, two hundred fifty people would be great. Um.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I think is the short answer, um, if we decide to do a mailer, I think we would be able to fund that.
Okay.
But it's not gonna be the only thing we do.
Mr. Dickey, come on, come on.
It should be.
Just the light not work on this over here?
It's working.
I would like to uh challenge the council. To stay abreast with the staff on the public outreach on this effort. This project is only going to be as good as how much public involvement we have. And so we are going to be pushing the limits on this. You can, I hope that comes up in a minute, so we can all refer back to that. This is a significant project for the city of Cape Canaveral. I think it's right up there with our vision plan. This is going to essentially be a focused vision plan for the Presidential Streets. So every effort that we make to engage our residents in the vision plan, we are going to do that plus more. For this project. So I've thrown the gauntlet down. I would love to see us all get really engaged in this, to include the residents. I think it's gonna be very important.
As you.
No issue there. I think we're totally committed to this public involvement.
As you can see, Mayor, the the staff is very passionate about this, and that starts right here. This council's very passionate about it, and it's going all the way down.
I think it's very important and something that's been needed a long time and it's it's here, so. I I don't think there's any problem informing the people, cause I know I can tell a lot of neighbors, like we talk and best thing to do is word them out. But to me, it's the best information you can get.
No. Well, I I respectfully disagree. I think that whatever we did back for that was a was not, that wasn't a good turnout. And so. To me, you know, when you run a company, I can't go back and say, hey, we held a meeting. There's a need for this. I think. We need to challenge ourselves to not move forward unless we get a certain uh. Minimum sample size. And I felt like this was the time to get this out of the way to upfront before this concert, this contract gets executed and we start. Moving forward on it. Um, if we do this right, we should have to use a convention, the convention center or a large place. Um, that can that can handle it. Because I agree with our community development director. This is a big project. And you bring up a good point on, it's like a vision with from Washington to Johnson. Um, can we zoom out a little bit and look at the whole city? How does this timeout with the actual re-envisioning? I think you said we were trying to get something done with Molly by Q one.
Yes.
Will this process start?
This is a nine-month process, starting when it's approved.
So this process is going to start, just say, next week or two. And then. We will coordinate it because inside and and item B on page five, it says Kimberly Horn will review the currently adopted resiliency plan. CRA plan as well as the city's comprehensive plan and land development code. Um, and what jumped out to me was the envisioning, you know, anything from the visioning meetings, uh, the twenty eighteen surveys that we did. Um, I think are are very valuable to this community. And then, you know, when I bring up the 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 visioning meetings that we had. Where people gave a lot of input, you know. Many years back, we're talking about doing a new visioning. And so. We just wanna make sure. I would rather wait a little bit, but. Instead of starting in a direction from Washington to Johnson to come away with a visioning where it's gonna go in a different direction. And so. I know staff is thinking about this, but have we thought about how this is gonna timeout if we start with this subsection of the city? And then we roll into the bigger picture? Should we work the other way around?
You might have had a floor back. I had the floor. I was making a comment and you went into your. Your dissertation. I I made a comment and you, by the way, you cut me off.
I thought I I didn't think I gave up the floor, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't give up the floor. You just took it over. I would, I made a comment and then you jumped on it that you you respectfully disagree with that comment, but you didn't let me finish what I wanted to say. I. I would like to finish my comment. I said, I can tell a lot of neighbors. Word of mouth is a very good way to communicate. I tell my people that every day. Communicate with me and I know what you're doing. I know what's going on. Yes, and I'm in full agreement with Kimberly Horn taking this project. I have no problem with it. But we, as a council, can surely get out there and talk it up and make comments that this is gonna take place again. It's another visioning that this city really needs to have. Desperately. I agree with it. But I I I was trying to state something and I got cut off. But I have no problem. I have no more comments. I'm in full agreement with Kimberly Horn running the show. And I'm sure that staff can find a couple thousand dollars to do a mail out. Thank you. That's my comment. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I thought you had finished, I pulled this agenda item, I had four things I was going over, I was on item number two, and um. No ill will there, didn't want to cut you off, I. Um. I do apologize for that.
Are we ready for motion?
Uh.
No.
Mrs. Callum's got something to say.
I just want to. I just want to finish my items, and that's what I was thinking, I I thought I had the floor, and so.
You did, you took it, yeah.
I felt like it, yeah, might have been taken from me, but that's okay, um, so. The, the question about the coordinating the visioning. A few months after this starts, we're gonna, are we okay with that? And that's more a question that our city planner and staff is, or do you? Cause I know there was a lot of encourage, you know, enthusiasm to do this, but do you feel it would be better that we do the visioning first and then let this follow?
I think they're two different things. They're two different things on two different paths, we can do both concurrently, and they might feed into each other, but this project is gonna be different from Molly's project. This one's a little more technical, if you will, um, with some considerations for streetscaping, engineering, things like that. I don't want to speak for Molly, but my um, understanding is that hers is gonna be more aspirational, I think, um, so that's two different avenues.
Okay, so the city visioning talks about the whole city and what we envision. The presidential streets won't be included in that city visioning?
Uh, of course, it'll be con- included, it's it's citywide, the visioning for the city, but we're trying to look at a small subsection of the city where they're primarily city-owned streets. If you look at the city, the roadways in the city, this is the biggest grouping of them. And there's some things we need to address that are beyond what Molly's project would address. And so that's what this project would do.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Callum, you out there?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't want to give up the floor to take it back again.
I thought you said thank you, I thought you were true.
No, I was just telling Brenda thank you.
Hello, Ms. Callum.
Yeah. So, this is a nine-month process. So this will be done. For third quarter of next year, as we're thinking, the plan? Okay. Got it, so now I can see how how it correlate. And. That is, that is it for me, I've got one other note here, but I, I think I've got that answered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm finished.
Ms. Callum?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I think that, um, you know, this is a very exciting project, all what we all agreed on, I think. Definitely sending, uh, spending the money on mailouts is important, because from the. Projects we've done up till now, you know, we always hear, well, we didn't know, we didn't know, so I I guess the um. The mailouts are very important, um, and I'm really excited about getting this done, it's been a long time coming, and. I think it's an exciting project for everyone in the city. And um, I think, you know, the revisioning can happen while this is happening as well, so. I'm excited for it to get started, I just think the mailouts are very important, and I I know the staff will do a good job on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mayor, I believe we have someone here from Kimley Horn tonight, in case there's any questions specifically.
Ms. Angel, do you have anything to comment? Okay, anybody have anything to?
I think this is a long time coming, and I'd like to go ahead and see it move quickly. I don't think there's gonna be any problem with getting the citizens involved to respond, respond any type of survey. Like I said, um, as far as traffic and everything, flooding, all these issues that have been. It's just good to see all these issues addressed on the presidential street, like I said, it's been a long time coming. I look forward to working with the city in this particular project, and Kimberly Horn.
Does anybody have any questions of the representative from Kimberly?
No, sir, thank you.
I'm very much in favor, very much in favor of this, if you're ready for a motion.
Okay. Through discussing that item. You look for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the proposal from Kimley Horn. In the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to prepare the presidential street. Streets vision plan and authorize city manager to execute the same.
Second.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Hey, we have a motion by Mayor Proton Angela Raymond and a second by Councilmember Wetmore. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we'll move into the public hearings. First item is ordinance thirty-three twenty-twenty-one, the second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Okay, this is ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending the text of the city's comprehensive plan. To include a property rights element as required by law, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the comprehensive plan. Severability and an effective date and legal status of the plan amendment, this is the adoption hearing of this proposed comp plan amendment. It proposes to incorporate into the comprehensive plan a standalone property rights element as required by the new legislation. Adopted by uh, the Florida legislature legislature this past session. Uh, the council transmitted this um, amendment um, after first reading up to DEO, DEO has no objections. So this ordinance is uh, ready for adoption, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
No comment, it's fine.
I have no comment on it, it's something that we needed to do, so we did it, and we don't have any cards on this item. Does anybody have any comment on this to make? No, we'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we um, adopt ordinance number thirty-three twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Councilmember McCollum and. Second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to pass ordinance thirty-three twenty-twenty-one. We call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, item number five is ordinance thirty-seven twenty-twenty-one, second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Hey, ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending the definition of city park. Set forth in section fifty-four dash one of the city code, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions. Incorporation into the code severability and an effective date, this is second and final reading of this ordinance, also a public hearing. Item, just generally, as you know, the council um, adopted a whole new. Uh, zoning designation for um, public recreation as well as conservation. As well as um, making a series of zoning map and and future land use map amendments to um. Implement the new designations and um, looking at the city code, um, given the new uh, zoning designations that were created for. Public recreation and conservation, uh, we're recommending an amendment to. Uh, the definition of city park consistent with the uh, the new regulations that the council previously adopted. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I do have an email from Mr. Osborne, it's all before you all have it. This, before we get into public discussion, I just want to bring that to your attention. Uh, you have any comments, Council?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Callum?
Oh, no, I have no comment, I just wanted to chime in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm reading the email you just referenced. The bolded area. I would ask for more refinement of the volume of use for a conservation area and discuss a quote preserve designation. Not sure I understand. That, do you? If you get some help?
This is from Mr. Ray Osborne, and that was, I guess, his comment to the ordinance. I'm looking, maybe that's his idea to add to the ordinance.
I think that's marked under section two. Two of three, where it talks about conservation, I think that's what he's referring to.
Mayor, we received this after the cutoff for the emails, but we placed it on here for as a courtesy. Uh, I I too questioned that when I read it, and I think. Um, what he means is he would like a a tally of the conservation land in the city, a refined. Understanding of how much of it is conservation land in terms of acreage. That's not part of this ordinance. Um, that that's a separate question, really, and and he, I certainly encourage him to work with staff on that. Secondly, he talked about discussing a quote-unquote preserve designation. Uh, that's a second point that he's bringing up, and I believe what he's asking is, do we want to put a definition in city ordinance for preserve? Or preserved property land that's owned by the property, uh, city that's preserved? So again, on both of those points, I would encourage Mr. Osborne to contact staff, and we can develop something, but I, as I read it, it doesn't appear to really be. On point applicable to this ordinance that we're adopting tonight. They're new initiatives, in other words.
That answer some of your questions.
Yes, I just, so. Maybe following up with with Ray and then.
Yeah, we would encourage him to contact staff on that.
Got it, thank you, yes, I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? I have no cards on this item either, so. Nobody. We'll move on and. Bring it back to the dais here for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-twenty-one.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. For ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-twenty-one. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Hey, item number six. We have two ordinances under this item, A and B. First one is ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-twenty-one, second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Hey, ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, ordinance of the city Cape Canaveral, Pabar County, Florida, adopted. In furtherance of the requirement set forth in section two point one-two, subparagraph five, Cape Canaveral City Charter. Authorizing the issuance of not exceeding one million two hundred thousand dollar capital improvement revenue note. Series twenty-twenty-one of the city to finance the cost of the purchase of the promenade. And related capital improvements and cost of issuance, providing for the series. Twenty-twenty-one note to be secured by the city's public service tax, half-sent sales tax, guaranteed entitlement. Communication services tax and certain franchise fees. Authorizing the city's financing team to proceed to develop the necessary documents. Providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions. Or parts of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions in conflict here with. Severability and an effective date. Uh, title's pretty self-explanatory, so this is second and final reading. Um, authorizing the proposed uh, loan pursuant to city charter. And this is a public hearing item, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, Angel? Start with you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with this, as I mentioned earlier. Every council person on the council voted five oh to reference CR money to go ahead and budget nine hundred thousand dollars toward the promenade. I would think that since they agreed to do this, they would not change their mind now, and I'm all in on the promenade, thank you.
Mr. Morrison, you want to go?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just as far as some lingo in here, in this agenda summary, right at the top, it says the city establishes goals at this annual strategic planning retreat. And continues to take significant steps to. Right here, ensure that much-needed capital construction projects be realized, this includes the purchase of the promenade property. For an estimated cost of nine hundred twenty-five thousand. Words. I think needed would have been debatable, much-needed is is not debatable, this was a project that we talked about in the strategic planning meeting. That we said sounds great. Never did I ever say that this should come before the basic necessities, and when I still drive around, again, see streetlights out. And if these things get fixed, when flooding gets fixed, then I think we earn the opportunity to go on and take on one point two million dollars in debt. Which means one point seven million. Also, when we got into CRA, because this seems to be a frequent topic that my fellow councilmember Brown wants to bring up, about approving nine hundred thousand dollars. The video speaks for itself what happened in that meeting, yes, I approved a nine hundred thousand dollar line item in a budget. One hundred percent proved it. But that does not mean that I'm gonna agree with the process on how we spend that money. We spent. The nine hundred thousand, go back to the strategic planning meeting, we said two to seven years, let's do it. And it and it was nine hundred thousand as a line item, even though it was nine hundred twenty-five thousand. But still, I'm not gonna quibble over twenty-five thousand dollars, I said. I listed my concerns, I did not say my opposition, I listed my concerns, I said, this is not, this is over market rate, this project was bought for seven hundred something thousand. It's two oh, two hundred thousand dollars more, that was the first concern, the next concern. Was that in twenty-twelve, we had two million dollars in debt, today we're over twenty million dollars in debt, that's a ten-time multiplier, and for the record, I am not against debt. I challenge the type, if we are gonna take on debt, then let's put it towards essential projects first. And I listed some other concerns, and then I said, very clearly, and I think this is forgotten. That if I am going to consider this. We need to put this project out, because it's a community project. We need to do a workshop and involve the community. And the typical rebuttal and. Concern with that is. You are going to delay the process. I offered up to show flexibility, to show compromise, that we could keep the closing date the same. I will meet in the next three weeks to do a workshop. And to notify the people, there was no appetite on this council, from what I saw, at least from a majority. With an exception, I think Councilmember Callum, she can speak for herself. On that, and so, yes, I approved a line item of nine hundred thousand for the same reasons I thought it was a good idea in the strategic planning meeting. But it does not mean that I'm gonna agree with the the contract. The way that we're gonna go about it, and so. We are not handcuffed to the budget, no matter however the process goes. If I went with my wife and I said, hey, I want to buy a car. Honey, do you want to put twenty thousand dollars aside to buy a car, we approved that budget. We walked into the car dealership and the man comes out and he goes, sign the contract right here. And and I say, can I test drive it, he says, no, you gotta sign the contract here. I'm not gonna buy that car. We need to test drive this in the community to see if there was demand for it, to see if it was actually wanted, because I think that the concerns that I listed. From the fifty responses that I received in less than twenty-four hours. Were all consistent, everyone said, yeah, sounds like a great project, but you need to take care of the priorities first. And so I will continue to approve budget items, and then when we get into the other steps of it, might change my mind on it. So I don't understand why this has been brought up twice at this meeting, almost irrelevant earlier. And it seems to be something that's being communicated in the community, and I hope I've cleared the air there, and I encourage people to go watch the council meeting and hear exactly what. And I encourage people to go watch the council meeting and hear exactly what I said. The only way I will consider this is if we put it out to workshop. And council did what I think this council's always done is, they've said no to, to community projects out to the, to the, to the, uh, to workshop it with the community. And so, my, my issues are the same. We don't need to hear them again. I think that this is something that, that we, we do not, it is not much-needed. In fact, i- if this is much-needed, then we're going to get into the much, much-needed. Uh, and I don't want to do that because Cherry Down Park got, this only had one vote. So the Presidential Streets had five people say they wanted it. This had one supporter. Uh, Cherry Down Park had two. And so, that's where I think some citizens raised that up. If we are going to go with a park, why are we going full steam ahead on that? I get it, market opportunities, real estate, but we see the damage I think we're causing within the business community too. And I did not allude to that, but we talked about what we're getting. We're getting a promenade or whatever we, we want to recall it. We're getting a park. But let's talk about what we're losing. We're losing, the only place I know where you can go get electronic devices fixed locally, right here conveniently, computers, cell phones, they fixed my products. I need to take it to them right now. My phone won't charge. And so, there is a service to the community from these businesses. Like you said, Councilmember Brown, you didn't realize how much this community appreciated and you utilize getting their haircut and those other services and, and. And, and we're, what are we getting in return? We're getting a park. I'm not sure that's a great trade, especially the amount of money we're paying for it. And so, for those reasons, I think that this is, the timing's bad. Two to seven years was the immediate goal, um, intermediate goal, and, and I'm not in support of this. Unless we do a workshop and put it out. But actually, I think it's too late for that because we've already signed the sales contract, so. Um, unless we're, we're willing to, to, to work, I'm willing to be flexible with this council. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your flexibility, Calvin Morrison. But when, during this process, you had the opportunity, when we're talking about city promenade, to say, I'll accept everything on that CRA budget, but I want the nine hundred thousand dollars removed. Am I right? Could, um, Finance Director, could he have done that? Or he accepted as a whole without taking to remove the, the promenade? He's done that before where you remove certain items out of that particular item that we're voting on. And did he have the same opportunity there? That's what I'm asking you.
Well, of course, because you, you could have considered what you would have done, as council would have considered, uh, with his recommendation to remove it. Our, and he had different stipulations, and I won't get into that. I'm a staff member. I'm not a council member. Uh, but of course, there was an opportunity there. When there's a budget presented to you, if you disagree with it, then you go to your fellow council and say, you know, would you be willing to pull this out of there, whatever? Of course, there was an opportunity. There was an opportunity to pass the budget. The budget was passed three to two. This was passed five-zero prior to the budget. Um, but I think that's all I have to say as the Finance Director. I, this is a council, uh, definitely a council discussion.
Yeah, and that's, my only point is that, um, I appreciate all that Councilman Morrison has done, but I've known him in the past not to vote on something that he wasn't totally, totally for or totally against. And this was an opportunity, if he wasn't against it or was for it, to take the initiative and say, hey, I'm not going to, um, agree to nine hundred thousand on a budget or the CRA approval, if it's not something I want.
Councilmember Brown, if I may, add a little perspective to this. I see what you're saying because the overall budget this year for the city.
Right.
Was voted three to two to pass, right? But I'm not sure the two council members who voted against it were against everything in the budget.
Right.
So, the point you're making is, when this was voted on five-zero, that would convey that it was totally supported, but when it went to the budget, it was three to two. And the budget still passed. That means that the people who voted against it had issues with something in the budget and said, you know what? I can't approve this whole budget because it's got things that I disagree with, and that's council's prerogative.
Right.
I just have a comment about the budget and the wastewater and stormwater fund, which is separate from this other operating budget and is separate from the CRA budget. And I just want to say something. If, if any of you have a chance to go over to see what Rockledge has done with their city hub, or you might want to call it a cityplex, and they've, they've really, really enhanced the look over there near their city hall. I have a map here, if any of you'd like to take a look at this. It's very, very important. You have to take an opportunity when opportunity knocks. I want you to think a minute of a totally different scenario. We don't buy the property. Say we don't buy the property. Okay? Now, it's open to someone else to buy the property. Think about all the different kinds of things that can go into that piece of property. A bar, maybe a small grocery store with a dock in the back, with, um, garbage disposal in the back, one of those big units. Think where it's located. It's located adjacent to what we're doing at the old city hall, our city center. In that plan, as I remember, that we will have kilns where we will have pottery classes. There will be art classes inside the building. Do we want a big, huge garbage bin adjacent to that? Do we want to have a bar, for example, adjacent to our city museum? Think in terms, think, try to think holistically. What this means. We're building for the future of our community. Something that we can be proud of in our city. It's the whole complex. And if you look carefully at my map here, you will see exactly why this is an important piece of property, why this is an important project and a purchase for our community. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Callum.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, you know, I can't support it because of everything that's been happening in the city. You know, we went to the strategic plan. It was great. We, we brought up the promenade. It got one vote on the, on the, um, the outcome of the strategic plan. We all said, yes, it was nice. But then we had horrible rain, horrible flooding. There's other things we need to finish in our city. It's a good idea. Why not right now? And, you know, Mayor Pro-Tim brings up, you know, the guy that owned that, uh, building said he had lots of people wanting to rent. They come in there, they rent. It would make a great coffee shop. It would make a great, you know, multi-use upstairs, downstairs. Um, it takes that tax money off, the tax money that, that I think it's nine thousand some odd dollars, uh, yearly that the building pays, uh, ad valorem tax. Um, it just, it's displacing two businesses that have been through a horrible year and a half that want to stay in our city. I just think the money right now, not that, you know, forever, it would, we never want it. But right now, with the real estate prices as high as they can be right now, and we're paying over the assessed value, I just don't think it's a right plan right now. Um, I would just rather see if we had to take the nine hundred thousand dollars that we approved in the CRA budget and apply that to the streets and the flooding for this year. And, um, I would be more, um, you know, for that. I realize that we passed the budget, but it was, you know, something that we did not pass the whole budget with the CRA, um, included in that. And, you know, that was my mistake. I didn't realize it when I voted for the CRA budget. Um, but I just can't see spending that kind of money on that project right now. You know, what is the rush? Like, um, Councilman Morrison said, let's put it out to, um, the people. Let's see what they say. All the emails that I got and people I've talked to don't want it. But again, we're doing something against what the people want, and I, I just can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment? More comments?
Go ahead.
I don't have any comment other than the fact that it's been something this city's been dreaming of for as long as I can remember, is to get that plenty of property and all the property from one block to the other as a campus for this city. And like, when opportunity knocks, you're not standing in the front of the line. You're going to lose. So I, I support it. I'm going to support it like I did before. Might not make a lot of people happy, but I think in the future, there'll be a lot of happy people that it was done, just like City Hall today. A lot of people were against this, but we got a lot of people liking it. Okay, I don't have any further comments. We'll go to the public. I don't have any public cards, but I will let you speak, and if you want to speak on something, it's going to be a three-minute limit. There's no cards here. Yes, ma'am? We would like for you to come to the microphone, please, and state your name, and you have three minutes. And I won't be rude when I say you're done. I'm going to just do it nicely.
Mrs. Dominique, um, I do live in the Presidential Streets. What I'd like to say about this project, uh, for the businesses that are in this building, what I'm hearing is you're willing to help them relocate. And I really think as a community that we stand together. There are plenty of vacant spots in our community. Maybe we can reach out and even give them a tax incentive to help relocate these businesses, not new businesses, the businesses that are there now and want to stay in our city. We can give a little. Sometimes we give a little, we get a lot. So maybe if we encourage another place in our city that has an empty spot that they aren't collecting revenue on and are collecting a tax, um, deficiency because they aren't getting rent, uh, maybe we could encourage them to have these people in their buildings. We can even reach out for our barber shop for our local hotels. Yep. I'm sorry if I use his name, but Mr. Barber, maybe he has a spot in one of his hotels that he'd be willing to relocate the barber shop. It would be an asset to his clients and his hotel. And meanwhile, our community would still not lose an excellent skilled barber. So I would like to say, we're going to move forward with, with this project. As someone that is a caring person in this community, I think we should do everything we can to help relocate these businesses. If their lease was a two-year lease, then they have, we only can help for two years down the road and give a tax break to somebody so they can get established and have revenue, and maybe their businesses will grow. But just as they know and this bickering, we've done this with, I don't want to go back to the meters, but we've done this with the meters. We bought the meters. We got the meters. The meters never went in. We lost five hundred thousand dollars for no reason. Because somebody on the council came in and decided in the eleventh hour, they didn't vote on it, because Mr. Morgan died, and he took his spot. And then he voted the meters down. And we had these meters sitting in a warehouse. I really truly think as a city, if we're going to progress, we should progress with harmony and not dissension. If you believe in something, believe in it. If you want to change, you don't do it in the eleventh hour. You do it the day the decisions were made. You have three months to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, anybody else have anything before we, yes, sir?
Good evening. Um, my name is Joseph Cobbs. I've been a resident of Cape Canaveral for about six years now. It's the first time I've come to a city council meeting and I guess some, first time I'm seeing some of you. Mayor Pro-Tim, I seen you over at the brewery. Hello. Um.
Excuse me, I like the pineapple hard cider.
Oh, oh, you and I both, you and I both. I'm, I'm first hearing about many of these projects today. It's, that's a sense of realization, but it is. Um, I've worked here since two thousand and fourteen. I moved over in two thousand and fifteen. And I'm just looking for some insight into the city of where I live. Um, the park is wonderful. The park is beautiful. Campus for the city is beautiful. However, business, I, I believe is best. Some of the business owners that are in the building next door are friends of mine. I've known them for years as well. Um, it would be a great opportunity to get involved with the community, to let community know that these things are going, and definitely to have community involvement in, in these projects. Because the only way I found out about many other projects is passing by and just taking a trip on my longboard down the streets. And that's no way to find out about things that are going on in your own backyard. Uh, it's. I, I, I don't know how to put this to words, but to see that there is potential for a property or for anything for the city, this is a, almost a blink of an eye city in some cases, if you're not, uh, staying here, if you're just driving through, and even sometimes I forget where things are, and the short stint that is up A-one-eight. Um, it would be very nice to see that we have some recognition, um, both in business and just in, in a general, uh, sight of any of the visitors that we have here. I work at the Cocoa Beach Area Adventure, and I try to invite people to stay in the city for as long as, uh, they can to visit some of the businesses, some of the places that we have here. And it's hard to do when I, I, I don't know what's going on. Um, we, it, it would be, I think, at, at least in my interest, to try to find a way to get that community involvement because I, I, I see that there's a lot of things that can improve in Cape Canaveral, especially communication within, uh, you know, just, uh, elected officials and the council members that are there. Um, I do thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Bring it back to the dais if we're through with public comment. Nobody else want to say anything? Because I have no cards. I would like to have you fill out a card after, or you can do it during the meeting and give it to our court there so that she has it for the record. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the dais for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I've got some comments.
Okay.
Uh, I'll be brief, um, in, in response to our Finance Director and Councilmember Brown's statement. Um, I hope the, the expectation for me to strike through line items that I'm literally willing to, I was willing to fund that item. I will never do that. But I will always get engaged when we, when it gets down to the details. And, and I, and, and I think the citizens want me to not just go, yes, nine hundred thousand, spend it no matter what the terms are. So I want to clarify that. I think that's very irresponsible that I have to stay handcuffed to a project, no matter what contract, no matter what process comes my way. Thank, uh, Ms. Levis and Dominique for speaking. I want to clarify, this is not, and maybe this isn't what you meant, but this is not in the eleventh hour. This has been, this is very new, as, as far as a. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I work through the mayor. But I work through the mayor.
Let him finish what he's saying, and we'll hear from him. Just don't have no forefights.
So, yes, this is, strategic planning was in March. This is one of many projects. strategic planning was in March, this is one of many projects and the the decision to make this, the Presidential Streets was higher than this, the the uh much higher, Cherry Down was higher. And so I think all this council will admit, the reason we're moving fast on this is because it's a real estate opportunity to happen quickly. Um, and so we're all kind of holding on, building the airplane as we're flying it with this one. Um, I wanted to clarify that. And uh just for the public record, uh for for the parking meters, I've researched that, I knew that was referenced and I think it needs to be stated. I thought that that's how it went. Um, I did not have a good relationship with our last former city manager with how things happened. And I don't place any blame on that council member for for that happening. Those meters were bought because the process was not followed. Former city manager jumped the gun, purchased something before, as I understand it, council had full approval. And I think it's important that we get the best information out there. Um, and that was, that doesn't shock me at all from the, from from uh our former city manager. I think our our new one uh has went out of his way to make sure he follows the processes um as the ordinances and so I had that belief for a long time that Ms. Vison Dominique said, but that's not what happened as I understand it. Process was broken, those meters should have never been purchased. He needed, that city manager needed two readings to approve the purchase of those or at least one. And that never happened as I understand it, so that was it, thank you.
You can respond.
You were, this came out just March. This is October. If you wanted, if you or any of the city council people wanted us to have more knowledge, you're in the power to do it, we aren't in the power to do it. The five people who are ever elected to this city council as soon as it comes up, that's when you notify us, you don't notify us when you are in the process of negotiating a contract for anything. They were talking about parking means, notify us immediately. You're talking about purchasing this property last March? Tell us, use a robo call, doesn't cost anything. We use robo calls to tell us in the prime on Richwood. So yeah, and you might go back and relook at the parking meters, which I don't really want to go back to. But the thing that I believe was supposed to happen was how we were going to charge for the parking. The meters were approved to be purchased. The lines were put in on extra time during the holiday between Christmas and New Year's. The holes were put in the ground, I called the city. I was told we're going to only vote on how the residents are going to pay, who's gonna get a discount, who isn't? So whoever gave you that information, yes, you weren't here, I was here. I'm very well aware how that went down. Let's not have this go down the same way. You've already, I believe in my imagination, you're in contract with this proposal, otherwise we wouldn't be having a survey done, I don't have a survey of a property before I'm in, have a contract. So if somebody has a contract with this city, then I think you're past that in my imagination. But I have a good imagination.
That's it, that's all I have, thank you, yes sir.
Okay. Back to us, councilman. One more comment? Looking for a motion then.
All right. I'll move that we adopt ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-two-one.
Second?
My second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Raymond and a second by Councilmember Brown for ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-two-one. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
For.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember Cullen?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Okay, ordinance resolution, I'm sorry, resolution number twenty-two-one, twenty-one. Mr. Garganisi?
Um, this is resolution twenty-two-one twenty-one, a resolution of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida supplementing city ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-two-one enacted on October nineteen twenty-two-one by accepting the proposal of Sanovis Bank to purchase the city's not-to-exceed one million two hundred thousand dollar capital improvement revenue note, series twenty-two-one, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement with said bank to secure the repayment of said note, authorizing the proper officials of the city to take any other action deemed necessary or advisable in connection with the finalization and execution of the loan agreement, the note, the security therefore, authorizing the execution and delivery of the documents in connection with said loan, designating the note as bank-qualified, providing for the repeal of uh supersession of prior inconsistent city resolutions or actions, providing for severability and other matters in regard thereto and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor? Council? Comment?
I got a few, just a few questions, I mean this is obviously, if you're against the other one, you're probably against this too, but I, just some technical stuff. Sounds like majority is going to move forward. The um the principal payment schedule exhibit A was not provided, is that something that's seems like they have all the information to provide that, just trying to figure out why that wasn't provided?
There is a principal payment schedule where that is provided is now we, and in in the audience today, we do have the the financial advisor and the loan officers for this loan. And if this um and this is, if this is approved and of course the second ordinance has just been voted on three-two. Um, where that will appear is in November, there is a uh agenda item where this basically is saying, here's the lender and when this is going to be signed, you'll see that, you'll you'll see those those figures. But where that's contained at is when we have the agenda item in November where the general fund, there'll be an inter- inter-local agreement, what have you, or an agreement between the general fund and the CRA whereby the CRA agrees to pay whatever that principal amount is plus interest back to the general fund. And let me just go back, so then back when the CRA budget was approved, it was approved with the debt service in it for the payment. And now we've reached a point where we passed the ordinance, we have the, we've chosen the lender. And now when we have the November agenda item, it will show clearly what the payment is that the CRA is on the hook for back to the general fund. So that's where you would, that's where you're gonna see an attachment with that, but um, that's contained in these documents though that these uh folks have today. Would it, but but that, let me, let me just say this too, that this is no, uh, this is no, this comes at no surprise, the the city has done fantastic here because we had estimated before we even had the loan proceedings or even went out for an RFP that we estimated that the cost might be between a hundred and eighty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars. Well, I'm happy to say that we've found a bank at one point sixty-one percent where the payment is well below that, which is going to be more money uh in the CRA, out less debt, so.
So you're saying that the percentage rate that we're getting on this loan of one point two, whatever it is, is one point six nine?
One point six one and I have our a financial advisor here, uh Jeff Larson, if he may speak.
Okay.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. Um, councilwoman from afar. Uh, yes, we did the bank RFP and had four very good responses. Um, Snowdis Knight is here, and Rhonda Bond Collins is uh bond counsel and Terry Larson works with my firm. We serve as financial advisors, so we go through the RFP, uh make sure the banks respond in a, in a consistent manner and go through that with city staff. And this was the lowest um rate that came back. Um, the two thousand fourteen note, was it a one point nine nine percent? Uh, also done for ten years, I want to make a comment on the ten year term because I think that's very good stewardship on the city's part and then two thousand seventeen, we did another note. Uh, that was two point oh five percent, I think. So we conservatively, because you know rates will go up, go down, stay where they are, we're not really sure about that and I'll guarantee that to you, Mr. Morrison, but um, we weren't sure where we're going to be, what the Fed's going to do, so we had budgeted two point three percent actually in our numbers, we wanted the city to be conservative. And um Sanovis came back with a very nice uh response, we appreciate Mr. LaFier doing that. Um, you also had very good responses, um BB and T, which is now part of Truist and SunTrust was at one point six three percent. That was what we call the cover response. We had another bank at one point six nine, uh and a really high bit at one point nine one, which was below our estimates of four very good responses. Um, so we analyzed those and we proposed um Sanovis, so they've worked very closely with um Rhonda here on the documents and uh uh, you know, we're ready to go on this thing, so the note, the loan agreement does have the amortization schedule, uh that is part of the uh the loan agreement, I see where it's not in the agenda package, but it is in the documents. Uh, we have all that, um and uh the average uh debt service is very attractive and and below what the, how the city had budgeted, so um, I think the maximum debt service in one year, we we have to state by Florida law is like a hundred and thirty thousand, a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, we also, this is less than ten year note, your city has such strong um cash flow position, the first note's going to be gone, two thousand fourteen notes and it's going to go away for your city manager and your staff and the council in three years. Um, and this will go away in ten years, this is actually um more like a nine point five year note. Nine and a half. Um, but you have the ability to make those payments, you have the ability to service this note. Um, we checked with John very carefully, he was very excited when I let him know that one point six one came in. And uh so we're, we're here to answer any other questions, but we strongly recommend this. Um, I think we're in an artificially low interest rate period because of what the Fed is doing. And uh this is a great time to lock in a very, very attractive rate.
No, um, I guess this is a leading question, so this city moving forward as they have done this quickly as they actually enhance them getting a lower rate of one point six one versus waiting in the later date. Because you don't propose interest rates are going any lower and possibly higher, am I correct?
Well, I will guarantee that rates will go up, go down or stay where they are. If I knew more than that, I'd be in an island somewhere. Take a break and action. I can just tell you where we are historically and the ten year treasury, um and Andy can talk about this, this is a very attractive rate. Um, we were excited in two thousand fourteen when we got below two percent. And uh we're one point six one, so I don't know if Mr. LaFier wants to, are you going to give us a lower rate then? But this is very attractive, I just, I just think that my sense, if I were to look at economics, is that this period of time is not going to continue. Um, you know, there's a lot of money out there and and uh, you know, there's an inflation concern, social security checks want five point four percent or something I saw, which is great. Um, for those receiving that, I think at some point the Fed and the federal government, Federal Reserve, and the federal government are going to have to, you know, stop some of this stimulus and we'll get back to more normal rates. This is, this is a great rate for ten years. I love the fact you're doing three ten year notes, I wish I had other clients doing that because it it shows your health. I think the bank recognizes that. I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, you did.
Uh, so many questions?
Yeah. No, no, no debate on the interest rate at one point six three, I mean I've I think borrowing, that's, that's cheap money and no doubt. Um, you've heard my descrip, it was, I'd wish that money was used for something else. And so now is the time to borrow? And that's my, my point is if we are going to borrow, let's, let's do it now and what I don't want to see is this can't go forever and so over the next couple of years, no one knows, can predict the future, like he said, we'd be on an island if we could, no one has a crystal ball. But if we see hard times, I don't want to see as property values go down, we get in a position, this rate goes up to two and a half, three, you see see the interest rates go up and then we got big problems, this nineteen fifty stormwater infrastructure that we have, we have flooding, we have basic things that really need to be done, then we're going to be paying premium rates to take care of these things and so thank you for your services and your help um to to get us a a good rate. No disrespect to your work, it was, it was the use.
Some comfort on sir is, I can only tell you what we have in place and your existing note in two thousand fourteen matures is paid off February first of twenty-four. That is around the corner when you're thinking about it, by the time the city council looks at projects, thinks about provisions, project workshop projects. Um, and that is a six hundred and eleven thousand dollar annual budget. So the way I would think, if I'm doing private capital planning and I know Mr. Morley is very, John, I've talked, you've got this cash flow coming up that's available, if you'd done a fifteen or twenty year note, you'd still be paying this note off.
Our debt is reduced by six hundred and eleven thousand dollars in three years.
Less than three years, yeah.
Yep.
February twenty, that's that's two and a half years, so that's, to me, that is something I would suggest, if somebody remembers that, and maybe Mr. Garganisi, the financial person there. I know John knows that, but that is a great tool to have as you're doing some capital planning for future things. Because you're already paying for it and this is, this has no impact on what the CRA is going to do to help or not. You know, we didn't release any of that to the bank, the bank looked at the city's ability to pay this without CRA support, so um, you know, I just wanted to share that with you, Mr. Morrison, since you're talking about future projects.
What, I do have a question between uh Sanovis and BB and T, I mean, you're talking about point zero two different. What what was the deciding factor? Uh, was it the prepayment terms, I'm I'm referencing attachment three? Was that?
One was a, one was a lower rate, um, one was the prepayment uh ability. Uh, on this note, after three years, we can pay it off at a hundred percent. And with um BB and T Truitt, uh it has, we have to wait uh after five years and year six. So this gave us more flexibility, nine of the banks asked for that initial covenants, we didn't offer that, we didn't propose it. So this, this just gave uh John and his capital planning a little bit more flexibility.
No restrictions, no penalties, the city doesn't put the city at any more risk, it was, it's, it's a great rate. And uh it's with, you know, the CPI and what have you, it's almost like paying no interest on a loan.
And what's not easy for the banks, we we made this a requirement, uh they have to hold their rate until a certain date. We expect to close this on the twenty-first this week, should the council approve it. Uh, documents are pretty much ready to go with some discussions tomorrow. Um, but they'll hold, they had, they'll hold the rate for a month, that's not an easy thing to do in this environment and uh we appreciate Andy doing that as well for us, so that was probably the difference, more flexibility, lower rate is a pretty easy recommendation.
Could reward them though too if it goes down, you know. Because like you said, it goes up, down.
Yeah.
Right.
All I can tell you is one thing, I don't know, where are rates when you propose, I think they're up a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, they're a big bank, they hedge themselves, I hope, uh and they're protected. But they have to do that when they respond, they were to pick. So uh, anyway, we're very pleased with with the responses and we've worked a lot with uh Sanovis and their attorneys.
I appreciate that, if, it'd be nice if you could extend that rate to the citizens of Cape Canaveral. One point six one, I guarantee that you would get a lot of.
Well, we'll have a workshop with Mr. LaFier, I'm
Okay, thank you.
The postcards, thanks.
All right. Council? Mickey, do you have any comments?
Yes, I just have a question, um, the gentleman said and John said that um this loan is secured without uh the CRA money. Um, that that wasn't a consideration in the city's ability to pay back the loan? Is, and did I understand that right? Is, and did I understand that right?
Yes, yes, compliment. This note is set up exactly like 2014 and the 2017 notes where we take uh, what we call non-aniform revenues that Mr. Gargan has read off to you uh, in the ordinance. And we're just, it, it's called a pari note. It has the same security lien on those revenues. Um, I only mention the CRA because you have the ability within the city. So the city's going to do this, the city's credit's very strong, we'll get a really low rate. What you do with your CRA to have them help support this is really a separate matter. The bank's not involved in that. And, and we don't pledge tax-incent revenues. It's just a much cleaner, I think Andy would agree, it's a much cleaner credit to do it this way.
Okay. So we don't need the CRA money to pay it back?
You don't. You have over 2.3 times covered.
Okay.
Falls off in 21 to 24, your coverage really goes up a good bit, so.
Okay.
You're right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, ma'am.
Any more, Mickey?
No, sir, I'm good.
You're good, okay. All right, counsel. We've heard from the main man with the, with the money, so. We, have any other comments?
No. I'm, I'm just, I'm against it for what we're using it for. But I do applaud the, the terms of the agreement and the hard work that went in. But thank you.
I, I only have one comment to make about, it's off the wall in a sense. But I do have to say that uh, we talked about Sherry Down Park was mentioned and the city staff is still working on the agreement with the county. That is in the works. And also we are taking care of the stormwater. And we're doing the engineering study, the Center Street Stormwater Project. It, it is being done as we speak. So those projects are going forward also. And uh, so it's being taken care of, rest assured. Thank you. All right, so do you want, are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
We're ready for a motion.
All right. I will move that we approve resolution number 2021-21.
For a second?
A second.
Here we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and a second by Councilmember Brennan. Call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellen?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right, that brings us to the conclusion of the resolution 2021-21. And we are going to take a 15-minute recess. So please be back at 8:15.
Back. Again here. Is everybody get situated? Ready to go, Lee? Okay, we're gonna reconvene our meeting, it's eight twenty-six and we're gonna get back into the agenda. We left off, we have to do item number seven, ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one. First reading, Mr. Gorgonezi.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one. Ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a property owner initiated small-scale future land use map amendment. By changing the future land use map designation of a parcel of property described as tax parcel ID. Twenty-four dash thirty-seven dash twenty-three dash CG dash thirteen dash four. And legally described as the east half of lot four and lots five, six, seven, and eight, block thirteen. Avon by the sea, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book three, page seven. Of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, from C one commercial. To R two medium density residential. Providing the subject property of this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A. Attached here too, providing for repeal prior inconsistent ordinances and. Resolution severability incorporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date, this is first reading, also a public hearing item. For this small-scale future land use map proposed amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this is a public. Hearing, and I don't have any cards on it, so if you. Decide you wanna say something when we're through discussion, I'll let you say it, but we'll. Get into council discussion. Uh, Mickey, are you with us? Forgot to check with you.
Yes, sir, yes, it's, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, thank you. All right, counsel. Mickey, chime in if you need to. Anybody wanna discuss this? This happens to be the property here on Jefferson and. This has been in a. Built-up residential area, it was zoned commercial and being changed to residential. Which is probably the appropriate thing for that area. I don't have anything to discuss on, I'm very familiar with it, it's just catty-cornered for me.
Brenda, is there any presentation you have on this one? Okay.
Um, the applicant's here if you have questions, but, um, like you said, it's, it's being rezoned from commercial to residential, which is more appropriate. Um, the only other thing I'll add is it was. Part of our initial, um. Grouping of city initiated rezoning, but the applicant decided to do it on their own.
Yeah.
Mayor, we do have one more comment from Mr. Ray Osborne who submitted this, he has a comment on this, if you'd like, I can read it.
Okay. I forgot about that.
At this point, uh, he emailed his comment. His comment was, there are large native trees that shade the sidewalks and road and benefit the community, contributing to its vision. I would propose that those trees at least not be permitted for removal.
Those are city trees anyways, that are on that area there. That are all put in by the city.
Okay, he, um, he wouldn't be removing trees that are off of his property, I'm sure of that.
No, well, those are on cities right away. The ones I'm thinking he's talking about, I know there's some oaks in that area, in that.
Yeah.
Development, but. What I'm understanding here is the trees that belong to the city on them. Right away.
Well. When I look at attachment three. On Poinsettia. I mean, those look like they're on the inside of the sidewalk. Guess what, back in the nineties. It went right down the, right away, and that's where you see a lot of those the same size, right?
There's a cedar tree in there and then the rest of those are all.
Yeah.
Brenda, we haven't seen any site plan for this, right?
For the lot to divide it into the three parcels, but we haven't gotten site plan approval yet. The zoning's not in place to, to do that.
Right. And, uh, as everyone here knows, the, the state has preempted largely what we can do on residential lots for enforcing any type of, uh, tree removal. Uh, permits or applications. But I would ask that staff work with this app, with this developer, um, when it comes to driveway and access points and try to save as many trees as possible.
Yeah, those were planted back in mid-nineties, ninety-five, ninety-six. Anyway, um, I don't really have any comment, I think it's, uh. An area that we don't wanna see a tire shop open up there or something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I ask the owner a couple questions?
Oh, the owner's here, yes, sir.
The applicant.
Through the microphone, please, sir. He's here, Mickey.
Thank you.
Say your name, sir, Morrison.
Yes, Brian Morrison, we have our name, Poinsettia LLC, the owner is proper.
Mickey?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
It's Brian.
Brian.
Okay, Brian, um, so you're going to put a single-family homes on the lot?
Uh, yes, this property will be divided into three lots, all of them meet the city standards for the R two district.
Uh-huh, and it, is it gonna be? Owner occupied or short-term rentals?
I don't know at this point. At this point, our, our rule is to divide the property to residential lots.
Okay, and the, 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 uh, trees on the, um. Northwest corner, there's a big clump of trees, are, are we gonna try to save as many as those, of those?
We haven't gotten the site plan, uh, site yet, that, that portion of the project yet, so I don't know, I was gonna need to see, uh, what additional street is.
Right, okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Any questions?
I do.
No, I just, I think what the city is looking for, the council, that we can get some kind of assurance from you that you'll try to save as many trees as possible.
Yes, I'm, I'm landscape architect, so pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
Nigel.
I just wanted to know who the owner is of the property.
Uh, it's myself and my venture, to the side.
Thank you.
Mr. Morrison, any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
I have no questions, uh, a neighbor, welcome. Mickey, did you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is public hearing and I have no cards on this one. So we'll come back to the dais and look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-one as written.
All second? Okay.
Okay, you got beat out on it, Mickey, Mr. Morrison. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Brown, a second by Councilmember Morrison. For ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one. First reading, call of the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, first reading, Mr. Gorgonezi.
Okay, same property, this is the rezoning portion of the item. Ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Florida. Adopting a property owner initiated rezoning of a parcel of property described as tax parcel ID twenty, twenty-four dash thirty-seven dash twenty-three dash CG dash thirteen dash four. And legally described as the east half of lot four and lots five, six, seven, and eight, block thirteen. Avon by the sea, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book three. Page seven of the public records of Brevard County, Florida. page seven of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, from the current city C-one low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city C, uh, sorry, city R-two medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing for the subject property of this ordinance to more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of this particular ordinance, proposing to rezone the property. The council just adopted first reading of the future land use map amendment for the same property. This is, so this ordinance has a conditional effective date. If both those, these ordinances pass, this ordinance doesn't become effective until the future land use map amendment ordinance becomes effective by law. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Angela, do you have any comment?
No comment.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir. No comment.
Mickey, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, this is just a zoning issue on the same piece of property. And anybody would like to say anything? I'm back here for, oh, the roll?
Just that Mr. Osborne's comments apply to this one as well.
Yeah, well, we did. All right. Call the roll, please.
There's no motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's no motion.
I thought we had. I'm sorry. But I'm on a motion.
I'll help you out if you want.
I was ready to roll here.
We're at thirty-six, no. It's thirty.
Ordinance twenty-six twenty-one.
Okay, I move to adopt ordinance tw- twenty-six twenty-one.
I'll second.
You got beat again, Mickey. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Councilmember Brown and a third, second by Mickey Kellam. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right, down to ordinance number thirty-six twenty-one. First reading, Mr. Gorgonese.
All right, this ordinance is thirty-six dash twenty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending Chapter One Ten Land Development Regulations, Section One Ten Dash One Definitions in Article Nine Supplemental District Regulations, Division Four Home Occupations of the City Code to comply with recent legislation adopted by the Florida Legislature related to home-based businesses making conforming amendments to the Schedule of Zoning District Regulations and other provisions of the City Code to comply with said legislation, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. So, um, as the council is aware, um, this, the Florida Legislature enacted a new law that went into effect in July, um, regarding home-based businesses. The legislature now has preempted, and once again, another aspect of municipal home rule authority. And, um, as such, the state legislature has now uh, set forth, uh, the basic rules for home oc- home-based businesses. In essence, um, home-based businesses will be, uh, permitted as a matter of law if they meet, uh, the minimum statutory, uh, the statutory requirements. So that's what this ordinance does. It recognizes that home-based businesses shall be allowed in dwelling units if they meet the Florida statute requirements in Section five-five-nine-point-nine-five-five Florida, Florida statutes. So, um, no longer can municipalities establish, um, home rule regulations pertaining to home-based businesses. And, um, you know, the legislature has really opened up the door for all sorts of, uh, different kinds of home-based businesses that many people would find, uh, somewhat conflicting with residential areas, but nonetheless, this is what our legislature has, uh, has adopted. There are a couple of um, exceptions, uh, to this, uh, ordinance. This, this proposed amendment does not supersede or repeal uh, any private declarations that a condominium association may have uh, and, uh, or any other, like a cooperative or homeowners association may have uh, regarding the private use of land. So this on this legislation preemption only applies to with the city's code. You know, condo associations, they have regulations on the books that prohibit certain commercial uses on the property. This law, adopted by the legislature or this code, doesn't affect that, that they can remain in place and be enforced by the associations. In addition, this ordinance does not supersede any provision of the city code pertaining to transient public lodging establishments, AKA vacation rentals. Since the city has a grandfathered, uh, provision, um, in the city code, that's, that city code provision will continue, um, to apply in this circumstance. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but I know it may come to a shock just for some people when you look at the strikeout, um, portion of this ordinance. My opinion, basically, we have to strike out um, practically every, uh, actually every single, um, home-based business regulation in the city code. One other point I should mention, you know, even though home-based businesses are allowed, they're still going to be subject to any um, ordinance of general application that would apply to any property owners, just that the cities can no longer adopt these specific regulations applicable to home-based businesses. So, for example, if a home-based business is engaged in a public nuisance, you know, the, you know, the city could enforce city, the public nuisance codes, um, against home-based businesses, just like they could any other property owner. City has to treat home-based businesses in the same manner uh, as, as other property owners when it comes to those nuisance regulations, the parking regulations. Um, there, everybody gets treated, um, you know, you know, the same. So be happy to answer any specific questions.
Mr. Morrison?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anthony, when you're looking at this, I mean, you can see the world differently from your brain, I think. Uh, what do you? That was a compliment. We need that, bro.
Anthony got a funny look on his face.
Um, what, it, what, what's the biggest concern, I think, you see in here? Just if you had to put, put your residential hat mixed with that city attorney hat on and well, I guess the city attorney, is there anything in here that you see a, a great concern that, that we're striking through? Um, not that we can do anything about it?
Yeah, no, that's the, that's the rub. I mean, i- i- if, if I was to have a general opinion on you know, municipal reg- municipal, municipalities' ability, ability to regulate home-based business, businesses, I, I personally don't see anything wrong with what's in the city code uh, that the city has adopted and has, has enforced for years. However, our legislature has now uh, preempted those regulations and unfortunately, you know, I look at it through my, uh, you know, my role as the city attorney would behoove the city, uh, council to remove those provisions from the code because potential, you know, I mean, the city can't enforce them any longer because of what the legislature did in, in this past, uh, past session. And, you know, going back two years prior, uh, the legislature now, you know, the, the, I mean, everyone knows, I mean, down this dais, how municipal home rule has been eroding over the years. You know, two years ago, the legislature adopted special legislation that if municipalities, um, enforce local regulations that are preempted by state, you know, private property owner now has uh, potential legal action against the city, right? And, um, you know, there, there are provisions where the city would have to be basically mandated by law to repeal those preempted regulations anyways, or suffer the consequences, which could be, you know, illegal action filed against the city, subject to reimbursing attorney fees cost in the legislature set, and damages.
Right.
Now, so, you know, there's a, there's a dam- damocles sword hanging over municipalities' heads since two thousand nineteen. Uh, to play ball when the legislature says, you know, certain areas are preempted and home rule is taken away. You know, that's just the reality of the situation right now, and I know, you know, the league is, uh, you know, trying to educate the, you know, residents about the importance of home rule and hope, home regulation and, and local regulations, but I don't think you have a choice, um, when it comes to home-based businesses, but to repeal what you have on the books today.
Thank you. No, that's all I, I have. We have to obviously move forward with this, and so, thank you. No further comments.
Okay, Anthony, on fifty, on three of five, fifty-two to fifty-seven, parking related to business activities of the home-based business applies to local zoning requirements, and the need for parking generated by the business may not be greater in volume than would normally be expected at similar residences where no business is conducted.
Right.
So, how can you even? Where no business is connected, if you have one person that's normally not?
Yeah, that, that's the new standard now, right? That's the parking standard for home-based regulations uh, that the legislature has adopted. So, you know, uh, it, it's I, you know, I don't frankly don't know exactly what that means, other than, you know, you have to do some sort of compare, compare, comparison. Right? The, the parking is not any more than what would normally, normally occur uh, in, in the residential area. So there's some, I mean, the legislature just did, they did provide protections for residential areas, uh, but you know, my gripe with what the legislature did is they adopted the standards for every community in the state of Florida, rather than you all, uh, make, adopting those standards based on local concerns and needs. So, you know, where we could have tailored that language to specific situations before this law, we can't do that now. We have to follow the state standard. So it's, I guess it remains to be seen how all of this gets enforced. Kind of a roundabout answer to a very good question.
You know, I, I see a similar situation to home-based business where a guy has heavy equipment and it's in a subdivision in Merritt Island. And he has it all parked in the backyard, but you can still see it. It's like large equipment. Like here, it was like, you know, Mr. Jones brings his Bolo's around for the night. He can't park it on the driveway. He's got to put it somewhere out of sight and getting it back in the backyard is gonna be pretty tough. But there's one place I know, it, it's over in, uh, Villa de Palmas, it's a subdivision, it's in a at a place over there and it was like right down the street. And the guy had, had some sort of underground boarding-looking type machine. But he kept it towards the back. One night it was sitting in the street, so I saw what it was. This is what that leads you to have. I, I can't see. I, I don't have a problem with small home businesses, but what about car repair in the driveway? Is that gonna be a lot?
Yeah, that might. Well, i- 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 it, it would, I know we have quite a few members in the audience, um, and it might be helpful if whoever's controlling the screen is just, you know, you know, pull up the, the legis- legislation, which is in the agenda item on page one fifteen. You can see what the parking regulations pro- are, um. You know, it does say that, um, you know, local governments may regulate the use of vehicles or trailers operated or parked at the business.
Right.
Or on the street, on the street right-ofway, provided that such regulations are not more stringent than those for residents where no business is conducted. So, you know, again, that's that general regulation that could, you know, that on the books. Then vehicles and trailers used in connection with the business must be parked in legal parking spaces that are not located within the right-ofway, on or over a sidewalk, or on any unimproved surfaces at the residence. So, you know, parking trailers on the grass, you know, would, you know, not, no, not in an authorized parking space, you know, could be, could be a problem and the city could enforce local regulations. And local regu- local governments may regulate the parking or storage of heavy equipment at the business, which is visible from the street or neighboring property. For purposes of this paragraph, the legislatures define heavy equipment to mean commercial, industrial, or agricultural vehicles, equipment, or machinery. But with respect to heavy equipment, you know, if it's, if it's visible, if it could be regulated, um, if it's visible from the street or neighboring property, if it's not visible from the street or neighboring property, the implication in the law is that the heavy equipment will be allowed because nobody can see it. You know, I, I don't know how that plays out factually in any scenario. And then some paragraph C, it says, you know, as viewed from the street, the use of the residential property is consistent with the uses of the residential areas that surround the property. Well, I, I mean, that's a eye of the beholder, um, type regulation, if I've ever saw one. You know, that, that could vary from, from residential area to residential area. So, you know, these, these are the standards, and now our code enforcement, you know, staff has to apply these standards um, when dealing with home-based businesses and you know, the, the, the legislature didn't even define really what a home-based business is. It says that, you know, they, they can operate in area zone residential, may not be prohibited, restricted, regulated, or licensed in any manner that is different from other businesses in a local government's jurisdiction that is provided in this section. You can get a BTR, though. You can't have a home-based business license, but you can have a BTR. I'm, I'm just the messenger of what I, you know, with the league.
They make it worse. They make it worse, you know? Take, for instance, if I got a, if I got a, uh, let's say, a, a, a food wagon, a, a food truck, so I might come home and I park my food truck in the grass. Code enforcement guy comes up and says, hey, you gotta move that food truck. We got a known parking in the ordinance in the city. It could make a lot of residents mad, because a lot of residents park on the grass. Guy says, well, I'll move it when all those other people move. Now, there's some people don't even have a driveway in their, in their properties. They park on the grass. So, it's, I can see, this is, this is the, this is the infinite wisdom of our people of Tallahassee.
That's right.
They try to cure things and they make it worse.
And this was fought.
It was fought vigorously, but I'm, I'm kinda just going over this because I know home rule is, you know, a big push to try to educate the public about what is home rule and what's the impact? Well, you wanna see the impact, just read this, read this new law.
Follow your research, right? You'll know the impact.
Yeah. Same thing with the small-area towers for, um, for the five G network. I mean, they can be located anywhere. Try explaining that to, uh, you know.
All five of our representatives Tallahassee voted for this.
Yes, but, yes, they did.
Everyone, everyone.
This was fought tooth and nail by Federal League of Cities and Space Coast League of Cities. And they kept sending people up to Tallahassee, but this was one of their priorities. And they just kept speaking against it, and they all voted for it. All of our representatives, you're right.
We created a monster, is what they did. I, I, uh, feel sorry for the people, really.
Yep, just a comment. I think the red hearing, like, we'll see how this plays out, as the city attorney says. It's a great example, mayor. I mean, when food trucks really start showing up in people's front yards, right, and you have people, I think that I hope that that's the greatest educator of home rule, because it, it, it happens, and I think that's where people will start to petition and hopefully they make those changes that these scenarios, but we still have our noise ordinance. We still have the no-street parking. You know, I think the state's position on it was coming off was economic very difficult for people. I mean, we heard tonight just the relocation of two businesses that we know people working from home. You know, I work from home, but I'm not servicing the public from my home. It's email, phone calls and, um, and I think that this is something we'll have to just keep an eye on and, and if those nightmare scenarios start to pop up, hopefully we can see that change happen, but there is a good side to this, um, that the state of Florida is trying to get, make it as easy as possible to get an income and to, to make a living, and it's economic development, and I think that they will listen when the the horror stories start to pop up. I hope they do. And I I know the whole moral argument is, well, we should make that decision. I agree. And I think their counter, from from my experience talking to them, is quit taking away basic liberties from people. And that's just, that's important for the public to hear, is that people have the right, if they own their property, to run a business from their property, as long as they're not violating other people's property rights. And I think that aesthetics is probably the most controversial, but still today, I mean, if that machine shop, that mechanic, those loud noises happening, that's gonna get shut down because that is a violation of property rights. Sound waves are coming over into somebody's property. Light pollution is a clear violation of private property rights. Um they can't park on the street, so how are they gonna service a bunch of customers? Uh, they're, they're still limited to the same building regulations that the residential community is, so they might get two to three. I think you bring up an excellent point on parking on the grass. That's one that I could see being an issue. But I'm not advocating uh for this. I'm saying, I'm trying to be optimistic about it and say, maybe this, this can help residents. And we're a two-square-mile city, let's pay attention and, you know, go, go say, hey, this is why you need to respect home rule if we see these concerns start to pop up. Thank you.
I think once these rules were enacted, um, they're gonna go forward with them. I don't see them being changed anytime soon. And I, we're, I'm looking at, I respect businesses and I respect home businesses. But when you start having heavy equipment next to a residential, inter-residential lot or subdivision, you're changing the whole dynamics of a community. And I think that as a community, we really don't want those kind of things, especially when you're talking about heavy equipment. I just think it could be something we could do about it, but obviously the legislators feel differently than me. And um, uh, that's my opinion on it.
But it says, local governments may regulate the parking or storage of heavy equipment. So that's not gonna happen. I think we're talking about unlikely scenarios. And in fact, we have the full control to regulate that.
If it's visible from the street or the neighboring property.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just thinking, it's, you got it in a garage. I mean, and it's closed, honestly, it's.
If you got a high enough fence, yeah, I mean, you, who wants to hear that equipment going in and out of someone's next door? All time of day. I mean, it's, to me, it changes the whole dynamics of the residential bill when you start mixing the heavy equipment into a neighborhood, especially when it can't be seen. All, all the, all the heavy equipment isn't actually tall. Some of it could fit within a, within the fencing. And I know that I wouldn't want to listen to it all, all the time.
Uh, I agree. I don't want to hear it either. And I think our noise ordinance will hopefully step in at that point. But I'm not disagreeing with you. I, we'll, we'll see it play out. And the law can be changed. That's the whole point of the law. It's constantly being changed. It's evolving. It's a living document. So that's all I'm saying is we petition that when these issues happen, we bring it to our state reps and try to work together. Thank you.
I have a comment. There was a case uh with a car repair going on over on Osseo Lane in Cocoa Beach. And it took several years for them to take care of the situation through code enforcement. And uh it was really quite dicey, but it was, you know, they were fixing cars in the back. They put them, they tried to put them in the backyard. But of course, the neighbors knew what was going on. And there were multiple complaints until it was finally rectified. I think it took probably close to five years. Just a comment.
Ms. Kellum, do you have anything you want to comment?
Yes, thank you. I've been raising my hand, but. Um, yes, I would just like to comment and um and say, you know, we don't realize how important home rule is until something like this happens. And and how important it is to the citizens to contact your local representatives and senators at the state level. Um, you know, the state never wants the federal government to tell them what to do, but they want to tell us what to do. And something like this could work in, um, you know, Green Cove Springs in rural areas, maybe. But not when you can have, you know, next to your residential, like I live in Harbor Heights. Somebody next to me could open a um, a smoke shop, a, a tattoo parlor, something like that. Um, and nothing against those businesses, but they belong in the right zone. Where we're, we're striving to stay a residential beachside area and and the state works against us. So, that's my comment is just for the people listening and the people in the audience to make sure that you let your representatives in the state level know because they're taking our power to govern ourselves away from us. So, you gotta speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comment. Anybody else have anything? Public, you heard, if you got any questions on this, this really would deteriorate a neighborhood if it could get out of hand. And like I say, it could be used against the neighbor because the neighbor's got to do the same thing that this business has to do. We can't enforce the business any harder than we can the neighbor. So, it's not a good situation.
I have many uh memories who are my family that would actually benefit from a rule like this. We gotta remember that we're in a condition right now that um, think about any of our courts where we're trying to get in goods for the holiday season and things like that. We don't have truck drivers who are available in the country because they can't park their trucks anywhere. We don't have a lot of businesses that are selling online because of rules that would prevent them from doing that in our own homes. So granted, there are many nightmare scenarios that can come out of this, but remember, we have many business owners who will definitely not change the dynamic of any community because of a business being held in their uh home or anything. Sorry, motherfucker. Um, but uh we definitely have to remember that some of those things are what the uh road good intentions are paid with. We have to make sure that we take care of any of the business owners or anyone who would be able to do that. Yes, there may be one or two in the community that may find it a blight, but there can be thousands who are impacted if something like this would continue. And, and, you know, I mean, heavy machinery could mean almost anything. Truck for that instance, but we just have to keep in mind that all the nightmare scenarios that we can think of don't necessarily come true. And and, you know, that we still have a benefit from a rule of this nature. I, I believe that's why it was in the legislature and it is passed because we have, you know, the ability to benefit from it. That's it, that's it.
I don't remember the philosopher, whoever said it. He said, I lived a horrible life, but none of it ever actually happened.
I don't want to talk to that guy.
And my second request is to let Mickey second this motion. She's tried twice.
Maybe she's not in favor of second.
She's been too slow.
All right, we, anybody else want to say anything on this? We're, we're discussing it. Public doesn't want to comment no more, so we'll look for a motion. Mickey?
Uh, I'm, make a motion.
This is ordinance number thirty-six twenty-twenty-one, in case you look at this, see what it is.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Kellum for mo- for ordinance thirty-six twenty-twenty-one, a second.
Yeah, I didn't hear them. Did she move?
Yeah.
You heard it?
She made a motion, but she didn't read, I make a motion to approve. She said, I make a motion.
Okay, we're good with that. Okay, a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Kellum to ordinance thirty-six twenty-twenty-one, and a second by Councilmember Morrison. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown? Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
City attorney?
Point of order, point of order, I believe.
She made the motion four, and then she voted?
No. I make a motion, then she didn't finish her motion.
Okay, I, you probably need to start that because what the, it's unclear what the motion is, so I think you need to.
Okay, I, I don't want to make a motion on this agenda item.
Oh, okay, okay.
I can move on it. I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-six twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, do we have a second? A second? Let's get it going. We have a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by myself for ordinance number thirty-six twenty-twenty-one. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, move on to item number nine. That is ordinance number forty twenty-twenty-one, first reading, Mr. Gargan.
Ordinance number forty dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Bavard County, Florida, adopting amendments to the annual general fund, special revenue funds, agency fund, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and enterprise capital fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions and an effective date. Um, this is the uh annual uh house clean, housekeeping, uh true-up ordinance for your annual budget. John, it seems like we just did this yesterday, but I guess another year has come and gone. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Mr. John, we're gonna let you have this one.
It's been a, it's been a great year. Uh, could you please bring up the uh cover? The, the cover, the agenda cover. Thank you. So this is, this is house cleaning. So we've come to the end of another fiscal year. And this is, this is still a process. This is the first budget amendment. And what this really just reflects is uh uh that this is verse versus what happened in the budget, uh with the budget against the uh estimated fund balances where we're gonna end up. So the budget uh, uh actual expenditures that were incurred against what we proposed as the budget. And the way we ended up, if you look at that cover letter in the general fund, it says six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And you could follow it down to the special revenue fund, uh waste water enterprise fund, and the stormwater enterprise fund. So at this point, um, and this could change, uh because there's a second budget amendment in November based on outstanding invoices. So we're still getting invoices and which will adjust some of these, some of these numbers. But for the most part, this is um, you know, uh where we're at in closing out the books. And um, of course, when we go ahead and we have the uh, in November, the second uh budget amendment reading, we will have, for staff, they would have been able to capture all the invoices that have come in at that point. Then the true final numbers will be reflected when the auditors come in December and do the comprehensive, comprehensive annual financial report, which is the, the city audit. So what this is the convey is to show that, you know, this, the city showed uh uh ended up in, in good shape in the general fund with six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And now you may ask yourself, well, why is that number six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars? Well, what do we have going on in the city right now? The multi-generation uh facility is not done. So the monies that are for the multi-gen, and it may not be all of this, but it could be a, a great part of this. Well, the, the uh, the project's in midstream. So we only spent about, uh, say, three million, three point two million on the multi-gen. We'll spend the remaining three point four million in this next uh, this next fiscal year, which is our, our new budget here. And that's why that balance would appear to be larger. The other balances uh are very favorable because if you take a look at Stormwater Enterprise Fund, six hundred and twenty K, well, there wasn't a lot of, there wasn't a lot of stormwater uh projects uh per se this year. And um, what has happened is with the stormwater is um our collection of uh stormwater uh fees uh from the residents after utility bills or whatever um, turned out to be very, very profitable. However, there wasn't a lot of stormwater projects. So we had like, uh, when we started out in the year, we had like four hundred thousand dollars in contingency. We didn't have to tap into that, and that's why that number's so big. So basically, if you want to scroll to um the next exhibit A, just go to the first page. That's all that's required. First, scroll down. Yeah, there you go. And this basically shows what our starting budgets were and what adjustments we might have made during the year and then the ending budgets. And um overall, this is just a snapshot of where we're at. And it's gonna be relatively close to this. And these will get adjusted again in November. But this gives council an idea, if you'll scroll up just a little bit. Uh, down, I'm sorry. Yeah. And this shows council, if you look at the bottom line where it says contingency, that's where that six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is. That's the um, the expenditures versus the budget. That's the money that was not spent. Okay? But there's a reason, like I just qualified it, is that those monies weren't spent because there's a project in progress and that's moving over two fiscal years. But that's, that's basically uh, that's basically where we're at right now. And we're still getting invoices. And we'll adjust this in November again. And then we'll have a um audit, our annual audit in December. And it'll produce a comprehensive annual financial report. And the city will end up in uh, as always, relatively good shape. So it was, it was a good year. Of course, you never want to see these numbers completely negative because that would mean that somebody didn't do something right. Okay, that somebody might be me. So anyway, it's turned out good. Any questions? This is where we're at right now.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. On that same sheet, infrastructure maintenance was budgeted to be one point two million. And sent, looks like about three hundred, four thousand was not used. Do you know why that was? Because a lot of the things we're talking about are infrastructure maintenance related that, at least I'm talking about the need to get done. Do you know why that was short or why we didn't need to spend the three hundred, four thousand?
To answer that question, all the invoices have not been collected yet. That number could change. But uh, what, where that gets explained thoroughly in the comprehensive annual financial report, I will actually put entries in there and say exactly, because I haven't done a whole compilation of this whole budget. It's not over yet. But when I do and work with the auditors, I will specifically point out, and if anybody wanted to look at their uh comprehend- comprehensive annual financial report from last year, you could go to the MDA, which is Management's Discussion uh of what happened during the year. And that's where it's gonna say, Councilmember Morrison, like, we didn't spend this money because this didn't happen or that didn't happen. So it's, it's a really big, it, it, so that's where it's, that's where it's explained. What projects didn't take place? Or maybe uh, you know, uh the, maybe we got economies of scale for something or whatever. But right now, that's the best I could, uh, I could tell you about it because the process is not done.
Yeah, and I mean.
I mean, I could get a, I, there could be outstanding invoices and that three oh four could go down to a hundred thousand. And then I could explain what wasn't done in a hundred thousand, maybe. And and not, not to use a bad uh example, because I know you love sidewalks. But I could say, well, maybe a sidewalk didn't get done or something, but that's not the reason. But I would just give you an example.
And that one just jumped out at me.
Right. Um, also, for instance, like uh, there's other things that feed into this. Um, our lawn contract could have changed. Maybe we didn't spend as much on the mowing for the city. Uh, the sheriff's uh, also the sheriff's uh uh program for the um corrections folks, the inmates, whatever who come to do the city, they discontinued that because of COVID. I could get into a lot of different areas on what makes up that three hundred four thousand. So, but I'm giving you I can't give you every single single line item, but I'll tell you.
No, I don't ask for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah, yes, I'm just, at the end, if we have that money left over, that's gonna be good news. And so and so I I understand the big picture. That was one particular line item that jumped out. And then the transfers are listed in exhibit B, right? That's that.
Um, right. That's that's the transfers that were required throughout the year.
Okay, and I keep that seeing the collection system maintenance reoccurring, one, two, three, four. Just in general, what is the collection system maintenance? Is that for the wastewater?
That's for the wastewater treatment plant, and um we ran into um uh heavy repairs there and um the collection uh, it required money to be brought in the collection system. I think if Mr. Moore is here.
He's gone.
Is Mr. Moore gone, the public work truck? He'd be able to tell you specifically um what those items were that either needed repair or um, you know, um went over budget or what have you, because, you know, something unexpectedly happened. Like, I believe we did have a few things happen unexpectedly that might have cost us fifty thousand dollars here, twenty five thousand dollars there, normal things that happen in the city, you know, for things that break down at the wastewater treatment plant or whatever. But that's what that has to do with.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And like I said, I do have to explain this in the yearly audit, so.
No question. Ms. Kellum? Questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We have looked for a motion for ordinance forty twenty twenty one.
Public?
Public.
Public.
Oh, forgotten. Public? Sorry. No public, back to the dais.
Okay. You ready for a motion?
Yep.
All right, I move I move to approve ordinance number forty dash twenty twenty one.
I second.
They waited for you. They gave every everybody waited for you. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and a second by Councilwoman Kellum for ordinance number forty twenty twenty one. Hold the rope, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we have two discussion items. Item number ten, remote two-way participation during city meetings.
Yes, your mayor, this one was brought up at the last city council meeting. Um, the consensus of the council was to revisit the uh the issue. Um, and the item that you have uh contains all of the backup information that was presented some three months ago when it was decided uh to stop doing the remote two-way participation during meetings. And just to clarify what I mean by two-way participation, that's um like Councilmember Kellum right now is on virtual with us. And during COVID, um, we we had to really think on our feet about how we could continue to have uh city council meetings when everybody was at home and they couldn't be together. So we um mostly the city clerk's office have to thank for this for putting putting this together. Uh, came up with GoToWebinar, and it was a a platform that we all used for a number of months. Um, and then when we when things started changing, um governors relaxed this rule or that regulation. We started coming back into the city council chambers. But we still kept this program, this GoToWebinar out there for some people who were perhaps more fearful of the COVID nineteen uh situation, who wanted to still continue that remoting two-way and and two by two-way, it means they can talk to us, we can talk to them during a council meeting. Um, the 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 quick uh summary I have of this is that those numbers began to dwindle um over the the months um as as COVID nineteen wore on. And it got to the point where there were very few people attending those remote two-way participat- patient meetings. So staff compiled the information, brought it to council three, four months ago and said, hey, we don't think we need to continue doing this. What do you think? And council decided, yeah, it's time to stop that. Um, last month, it got brought up again, and I think largely it was because of the the Delta variant that started resurging with COVID cases, and that prompted um me to make the decision to cancel the the Friday Fest. And and that was heartbreaking to do that. We were all looking forward to it. And right on the heels of that, we had that September council meeting where we said, hey, if we're not having Friday Fest, maybe we should reconsider this remote two-way participation meeting. Um, and so here it is, uh requested a month ago, it's brought back. And yes, things have changed. They continue to evolve. COVID nineteen is keeping us all guessing, but um the numbers are down. We're doing our own wastewater sampling, and they're still down. They're they're trending with everything that we're seeing in Brevard County and the state in general. The numbers are way down. We did we did have the the return of the Friday Fest in October, and it was fantastic. What a great turnout. So nobody can guarantee that we're out of the woods with COVID whatsoever. It it may come back, heaven forbid, but where we are right now, I think we're back in that same position of um we just won't have much participation, I think, in the two-way um remote participation. So what I asked Molly to do, and I don't know if she can speak during this or not, I know she's listening, is um come up with a cost um per resident, per user. Uh, when we were doing the two-way remote participation, we do have the statistics of how many people were involved, engaged. We divided that by the number of dollars that it costs to have this. And Molly, help me if I if I'm right on this or not. I I think it was about six dollars per person to attend, and they would be on for maybe fifteen minutes on the average. Um, so um that to me is hard to justify the business case to continue with that, especially considering the 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 problematic nature of of the platform. Um, it is prone to glitches and and dropouts. Um, you have perhaps some issues with uh um civility-based issues when people are at home. They don't have necessarily the same uh decorum that they might have as the people that are here tonight. And um for those reasons, I would recommend that we we continue uh where we are right now, which is focusing on um the recording. And I'd like to actually make make the argument that the recording, and what I mean by that is the one that you can watch after the meeting, actually has a much larger audience than the handful of people that might be here on a remote two-way participation. The recording um is always gonna grow naturally. That's nature of it. It's on YouTube. It's on the city website. It's always gonna get bigger, the the audience for that. But the the audience that we see in the twenty four to forty eight hours after a council meeting on those recorded meetings is much larger and multiples of people that are wanting to do the remote two-way who did it historically, or even that watched the live box box cast. As all of you probably know, you can go to your computer at home right now, and you can watch this live, and it's and it's captioned with ADA. It's a service we pay for, and we're we're fine with keeping doing it. But even those numbers pale in comparison to the people who watched the recorded version twenty four to forty eight hours later. So I would propose that if we're really serious about doing something about helping our audience, we put focus additional attention and resources perhaps on that recording. And what I mean by that is maybe additional cameras in here have a a video control mixer back there and a person who's trained how to do it to create um really professional-looking videos for posterity that we're putting out there on the city website. We're putting out there on YouTube, and the ones on the city website, we could have software. Lots of cities do this, where you can index with a click of a mouse to go to item number five or item number seven, and you're right there on the video. I think that's a much larger audience that we need to pay a lot more attention to than the small handful of people who might want to be here at a the remote two-way participation. So that's the business case I'm making and recommending.
I'll just second what Todd has to say. I think that um I think that the staff has come up with a plan, and I believe our city manager has studied it, the staff has. And I just second what they've done. I think that they're doing a good job on this. And I think that it's a good business decision. Thank you.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Morrison?
Yes, I just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Get a couple of things. Um, I want to reframe the conversation because I and Todd is my witness, I brought this up to Todd prior to COVID. Um, if if there was anything good that came out of the awfulness of COVID, it was that two-way communication and citizen input was born. This is a vision that I think cities who are going to get to the next generation and who are going to really value citizen engagement are going to adopt. I think that the method that you have to come in is archaic. I think we need to open our doors and welcome people, but people with disabilities, people with a a child at home, people who are working and they're, you know, it's the first six to seven agenda items that are not interested in, but they really want to speak on that eighth one. This is economic development. You're allowing people to to come home. Well, you know, we've been called out about being disrespectful to the public who have to sit through things because we're genuinely trying to get through issues. And this gives people the chance to kind of get dialed in on that item when they want. And I think Cape Canaveral, if we're going to, you know, get to that next level, that COVID from an engagement standpoint was a blessing and allowed us to get there because citizens want to participate in their 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 local government. A lot of the people don't come because they get off work late. They don't want to, you know, uh I don't think it's con- convenience as much. I mean, we live in a small city, but just the you know, we're funded by the people. We we kind of take their money through taxation and fees and fees, fees is more voluntary. But the least we can do is take, I mean, I can't even believe we would quibble over the amount of money. I mean, for two thousand one hundred dollars or what was it? Let me see here. Two thousand one hundred sixty dollars is a wonderful return on investment for opening the doors and 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 giving people a chance to to engage. The issues of civility, we had no serious civility issues, I think, in any of those meetings. I mean, look at the numbers. And yes, they dwindled, but it never got to a point of, wow, this is a waste. I mean, it it we saw a hundred seventy five in Ju- a hundred sixteen in May, a hundred seventy five in 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 June, a hundred sixty three in July, fifteen forty, fifty three, thirty three, twelve. Those are solid, solid attendance numbers. I mean, today, if you pulled the staff out, it's a pretty good showing tonight here. And I think you're always gonna have higher numbers the next day because that's that's a time where where people are kind of catching up. It's more convenient maybe for the demographic of this community. But I feel strongly about this, and I'm excited. I don't want it to be this hindrance. And I hear Todd loud and clear that if it's a pain for staff, it the money should be, in my opinion, a no-brainer. And actually, so I wanted this before COVID, and then when we said the numbers are dwindling, we we said, let's get rid of it then. But then I go back and watch that meeting. I said, I want to find a cheaper alternative if it's just about the money. And I don't think it was about the money as much as it was like, is this the highest and best use for our staff time? I I fully support that if our city clerk's office or Molly or anyone on the matter says, hey, this is really becoming a problem, Todd is going to, I think, has no problem telling us that. And if that's it, then I would be in support of finding a part-time contracted service to make sure that we're giving this level of service to the citizens of this community. And I love what Todd said about investing in uh the professionalism and the recordings. You know, our the recordings today are, you know, we're really far away. And I think that body language is important. I think that people need to see their elected officials, similar to a Brevard County Commission meeting, and be able to to have a better experience about what's happening in their local city hall and to watch it. And if we've got great viewers the next day, and we can improve the just the overall production of what happens at City Hall, I think that civi- citizen engagement is gonna go up even more. Um, from the people who speak at the public comments, emotions matter, and and you can see them. And and we've watched school board meetings, a lot of emotional ones. We've watched county commission meetings, and it feels very disengaged, but when you watch them, you're there. And so when you put six dollars per person as that metric over that period of time, I mean, what's the value of one person saying something that really changes your mind on an important policy decision? And I can't distill it down to the it's twenty one hundred dollars per year, as I understand it. And I think that that to me is a good investment. So if we want to look at any leftover funds or establish a budget for improving this, I think it's something that I don't want to reframe the conversation that, well, COVID hit, so therefore we had to do it. Now COVID's going away, and so therefore we don't have to do it. What I'm hearing is probably not a good highest and best use uh for our staff's time. I'm open to to find somebody who specializes, who can come in and just once a month, come in, run our meetings for us for this four-hour period. We contract them. They knock it out. They take it home. They produce it. They handle it. They put they uh work with our team as however Todd wants to direct them. Um, and I think that's something Todd and I talked about just briefly. And so having that conversation, I want to do all the above, and I want to be reasonable with the cost. And I think this is something that really we should try to understand, like, try to work together to make this a success because I think Cape Canaveral needs to be out front on this, and I think the citizens here will really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Well, I I think if we want to get more um public participation, with the people I talk to, say, these meetings are way too long. And if you go to the average minutes um that are watched, we're not even getting into the gist of anything, and people are already leaving. So if you want to go ahead and do something about it, we need to cut the length of time of these meetings because what can be said can be said in less time than we're taking to do it. Um, the the citizens of Cape Canaveral are very intelligent people. And I think that we're doing a disservice when we're having four-hour meetings when everything can be said within two hours. And that's what I'm hearing. Um, thank you.
Our council meeting should be a business meeting, professionally, a business meeting. And I think that when council members speak, I think that in order to give a professional presentation, stick to one theme and speak about it, and it should be done in probably a good professional presentation, two to three minutes. And I think that would cut down. And I think that that's what we should do, is two or three minutes for each person to speak, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, are we really using this as an opportunity? Th- this has nothing to do you uh we're talking about giving citizens access, and then so we're taking my comment, if I understand, about improving the experience for citizens. No, I'm talking about giving citizens more access, more transparency. That and I agree a hundred percent with what this council's saying is that, yes, being more concise, being shorter, trying to get through it. Amen. I will raise my right hand and agree that that would be a very good thing. And I'll be the first one to step in line and say that's something that I can work on me, and we can all work on ourselves. But but let's look at what we're voting on tonight. We're talking or discussing at least about adding in a service that gives citizens the ability to communicate with us. They already can watch our meetings today. It has nothing to do with how how they're gonna be, how long they're gonna be watching. It's we we're trying to flip one more switchback on that says, let them participate from home. That doesn't have anything to do with the conciseness or the brevity of what we're saying. And so I just it's getting late. Yeah, we got fourteen agenda items. We used to meet twice a month. We used to have a workshop before every meeting. We used to have ten to twelve advisory boards. There was it's getting late. Yeah, we got 14 agenda items. We used to meet twice a month. We used to have a workshop before every meeting. We used to have 10 to 12 advisory boards. There was a lot more citizen. And so when we try to jam everything into one month and we don't have workshops and we don't give citizens outlets, these meetings will go longer, 100%. So we can, I could throw up all these different ways of, to get better, but we're talking about, do we want to give citizens another opportunity to, to, to di- to talk and to participate with in their public? I'm saying yes. And if our city manager's got an issue, I'm willing to, to fix his issue by bringing a contractor in and they run it. And it's well worth the money. I just,
Excuse me, I believe that our city manager said that the staff would be looking to see if there was a good contractor to do this and that they would be investigating this. And I thought that that's what he said. Maybe I misunderstood. But that's what I think that
For the produ- for the final production.
Of course, we
I'm talking about for the two-way though.
Yes, I understand. That's what Webinar did. I understand that. But many times it was ineffective. And that was the problem, the technical difficulties. So looking for a program, it ta- does take time to find a program that is appropriate for our use and effective. And I think transparency is definitely there. I mean, we have everything listed in our, uh, weekly bulletin that we get sometimes twice a week. And everything's listed there and people know how to click on to see our meetings. And if they have any questions, they can go to the city manager. They can go to the city manager's coffee, coffees and ask any questions. And I think that we're extremely transparent. If anybody ever wants to see about the budget, they come in and talk to, um, John Delio, if they want to see something or hear something about planning and zoning, they go to Brenda. I think that we're very transparent and very hospitable to our residents about answering any questions. I know we get telephone calls, we get emails, and we answer them.
Mayor, we're happy to provide any service the council wants. Um, I do want to make sure that you and the public are fully aware of all of the aspects of it, including the cost of it. And that's why I come to you with the, from the business case perspective. Um, I don't know. Daniel, is it possible that you could unmute Molly? If she's on there, she just texted me that she could speak. She's got a couple of words to say on this. Molly, are you there?
I'm here.
Can you go ahead, Molly?
I think some of the more critical numbers that we're looking at here, and I, I would not argue against as, as somebody that actually has had multiple opportunities to engage in different government activities remotely that I probably would not have already, you know, getting, gotten in my car and gone to. Um, I do appreciate the ability to have two-way communications, but I think there's a better way for us to facilitate it. And I think that we can be a lot more effective in not just communicating to the public and making things more accessible, but we can do a better job of allowing people to engage on different platforms. So it's not that GoToWebinar hasn't served us well. And I mean, $6 a user isn't terrible. But when it comes to the unique users, and when you really look at how many times we can identify that more than 50% of the audience was staff members, that's, that, that makes it difficult to, to argue for full public accessibility of this program when most of who's using it is staff.
What kind of numbers would you say, um, we typically had that weren't staff?
I see, I'm looking at the spreadsheet, um, that was provided before. There are some days where it's up to 75% and there's some days where it's as low. And this is kind of heat of COVID, uh, 38%. So it, it was a good range, but more high numbers than low numbers. So the average is a little bit deceptive. At least from my perspective.
Yeah, we, we did definitely have some high attendance numbers there during COVID. We had some big things going on. Yeah, but that's all into the average.
But, but think about that. We would have never been able to get 175 people in here. That's my point. We can reach 175 people. That's a huge success. We should be applauding ourselves over that, not taking it away and figuring out, how can we do that again? We got what, 70 people we can fit in here? I don't know. Uh, fire code, whatever it says, but like, this is remarkable. And just because it dwindles down to the twenties and thirties doesn't tell me that we're failing. I just, holiday time of year and I'm, I'm proud of staff. I don't want a frustration to make out of this. And when we started talking about limiting our speaking time, that's going in the wrong direction from what this agenda item is set out to do. It's, we can talk about that on another day or make a motion now to, to do that. I'm happy to, but we're, I really want to do this. And I know the citizens have, have conditioned me to say they appreciated it. And to me, it's a drop in the bucket for what we're getting in return. If, if, if staff could, I, I would like to, if, if we're going to get to a motion here and, and I'll pause is, that staff seriously is, if I heard Molly, maybe go to Webinar because it has glitches. And I read in the report where it said IT did everything they could and they couldn't figure out how that just don't, maybe we have to go to a different IT professional or somebody to figure this out to where, whatever the pains are, we've obviously got money left over. To me, this is money well invested. Let's, let's make the commitment and, and try to figure out another platform. Or I know our staff will figure it out. And I just don't want it to go, I don't want to do this because it's such a pain and say, I'm willing to bring in a third party to completely take over the AV side and take that off the plate if that's what our city manager wants to do. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I, my turn?
Go ahead. I was, yeah, I was just going to, let me go through the council next very quick, Drew, Mike. Okay, Nikki, you're going to have the last say.
Okay, thank you. I just, um, I think that, you know, we have an aging population in, uh, in our city. People are still not real comfortable with coming to public places. We still have the six feet apart from each other on the back of the chairs, I see in the audience. And I think in the big scheme of things, two, 2000, uh, whatever, I, I don't have the paper right in front of me, but you know, in a $33 million budget, $2,000 for more public engagement and, and it's not about transparency, it's about them being able to communicate with us. I think we owe that to our citizens to provide that. And if it becomes, um, you know, too much for the staff or it's not working out, I agree with Councilman Morrison that, you know, we, we look into hiring an outside company that comes once a month to, and does this for us and, and, and the public can participate. I just think that it's really important. And as far as the length of the meetings, you know, I remember before I was on the council or even on the leisure board, there was always two meetings a month, like, uh, Councilman Morrison was saying. And it's very hard unless you have already made up your mind before you get to the dais to discuss with other council because that's the only time we can talk. And sometimes it takes longer than it should. I mean, I mean, we can all work on making our comments less, but it's an important between council to be able to discuss ideas. And for me to tell the rest of the council what people are telling me, and I'm listening to what people are telling them. So we can make an educated decision and, and do what's right for the citizens. And I think that this is important for the citizens. This is a service we need to provide. Thank you.
The only problem I had with the GoToWebinar was half the time you couldn't understand what the people were saying. Some of them, I didn't even know who they were. You had even who they, you couldn't hear who they were to talk. And, and they were breaking it up. A lot of them were garbled. I just, I, I think that if there's something can be done with public participation, that is where staff needs to look at, what can you do to make it worthwhile to have that? Otherwise, go to Webinar and just go, go to Webinar as far as I'm concerned because it does not work well. It doesn't work.
Well, is there other com- other people that we can go to to look at?
Yeah. That's what I'm asking staff. And I think that's what their recommendation is to let them try to find some way to make this work.
Yep, Mayor. One of the things we did budget for, for the current fiscal year is agenda creation software. And one of the leading companies for that is Granicus. Um, and I believe you've got a meeting with them coming up very soon. And Right, sure. And, and that plays right into video recording and production, and perhaps they have options for this too. So if, if I understand all the comments, um, certainly the, the staff burden is part of it. But, um, if, if council wants us to explore more, uh, companies and more capabilities that could provide that, we should be able to report back on something with Granicus at least next month. On, on see how this is going. This is going to be an evolving thing as, you know, we're, we're inventing a wheel here. You know, the city of Orlando doesn't have a GoToWebinar where can't imagine them having 500 people stacked up in a queue, everybody getting the three minutes. This is just not done, uh, for cities. We're inventing a wheel. So we're asking for patience. I think we're, we're clearly seeing that the, the council wants us to explore this more, uh, robust platform that could get two-way communication if possible. So we'll just keep reporting on this and understanding that the council is
Just the, the forward movement of the more closer perspective of the city council members rather than the view we have on our computer right now is important to people. And being able to talk, yes, is important also, but I, I think you just scour the bushes and see what you can find.
And keep reporting, keep updating the council as we go.
I think that's the way to approach it.
Okay.
Because I know the Webinar, GoToWebinar, just my opinion, is wasted time.
Thank you for your patience on this. But building a wheel is never easy.
Okay, we have a ton of clock, uh, coming up pretty quick. And we got another item here. If we're through with this discussion. Okay, let's move on to the last item, number 11. And I do have some cards. Uh, Council, I don't know if you have any discussion you want to start or just want to go into public participation? But we all went to the
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't want to get down to that. It gets stressful. We have 10 minutes, right? Do we have to close? Would you, would you be okay if we made a motion to extend right now for 15 minutes after?
Well, we can extend it. How many times can we do legal? One time or two? Extend the meetings.
That's 10 o'clock.
You can extend the meeting.
Yeah, I'm there.
If I do it now.
With 15 minutes?
It's stressful down at that. Can we do it now? I mean, we'll try to get out of here as fast as we can.
I have six cards and we will hear everybody, but I'm going to hold you to the three minutes. So if you got a, a reputitious announcement to make from the previous, you might as well not say it because I'm going to hold you to your three minutes. Use your time at your best. But if you want with extension.
Yeah, six cards at three minutes. I, I'm just going to say I moved to extend for, yes, 30, and then we try to finish as fast as we can. That, yes, I moved to extend the meeting by 30, 10:30.
I'll second.
All right, we have a extension for 30 minutes, which means 20 after 10.
Forty minutes, sorry.
Or 20 after 10.
All right, 10:20, thank you.
Council, are we going to be mute on this and just let public talk? Or are you going to start off?
I, I've put this on. I just want to say
Mayor, we need to have a vote on the motion. We have a motion on
There's a motion on the floor.
We need to call a vote.
Call a vote to extend for
To extend the motion, yeah.
I moved to extend to 10:20 PM.
All right, we have a motion to extend 30 minutes.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Morrison.
We had the meeting at FDOT. I think a lot of the, the council was here as entirety. This council has not discussed this after FDOT. The goal of this was to not, you know, take it to that level of make a decision or you're for it or against it. I wanted to basically give the citizens an opportunity to weigh in. This would be the first time as a council to get some initial thoughts about it. And to share that, just a couple of minutes each would be fine. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mayor, if I could just make an opening comment on this. Um, city council has made their wishes clear over the last six years through three separate resolutions about what they wanted A1A to have. The features, the design, never once did the council say, we want a modern roundabout. In fact, um, I think everyone was just a little bit surprised when that idea came out and circulated about a year ago. Uh, at that time, um, the TPO did request of me that we ask the city council to support this. And, um, I told them, I told my city council that I'm not going to put them in a position of supporting something, um, when it's arguably going to be a difficult thing to push through community. Uh, not that they're good or bad, but rather than have the city council be the cheerleaders for the roundabout, I instructed TPO and NDOT, FDOT that you should work your process with the community and get the feedback directly from the community. So I did not ask the city council to support the roundabout. I just want to make that very clear. And that's why they haven't come out and said anything about this. There is a process in place here. FDOT is working that process. They went to the community two weeks ago and held a meeting. Some four, 500 people were there. They gathered input from them and they're not done. So there's, there's a process in place here. I just wanted to make sure that was out there, Mayor.
Now, I know, I, I want, I'm, everybody here was present and I see a lot of people that don't live in the city was there. And I had a lot of comments from these people that live in South Cocoa Beach and Melbourne. I had, won't even, well, that, the comment mainly was it's just going to slow us down going through that thing. I think that was the whole idea of A1A's movement was to slow the traffic down out there and make it safe. But I just wanted to bring that point out that there's a lot of people that were against the thing. I, I have no way, either way, I can live with them. I can live without them. I don't drive 60, 70 miles an hour down A1A. But I, I heard that comment so many times, I just got tired of it and I left, you know, well, it's just going to slow us down. That's the whole idea. Is to make it safe out there for people walking and bicycling or whatever they're doing and driving your cars, but uh, they don't want to be slowed down. So that's, that was all I heard. So I don't have any, any real gesture either way. I'm used to roundabouts and I can live without it. I've done a lot of roundabouts. Uh, I will go into public participation if we don't have any discussion up here.
Mr. Mayor?
Pardon?
I would like to speak, please.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think, uh, I, I'm really very happy that FT, FDOT is finally paying attention to Cape Canaveral. I know as, Mr. Mayor, you've been on council for a long time and this is something that, you know, we've been trying to get them to spend some money here and help us slow down the traffic. I, I again, agree with you. It, to me personally, a roundabout doesn't matter. I, I grew up with them in New Jersey and, but talking to people and being at that meeting, the, the consensus of a lot of people where they don't want it. I think that they, the, their idea with, when you come off of 528 and you're heading south and the bump out, the landscaping, the traffic slowing ideas are great. But the, um, medium in the middle and the roundabout and how it's going to affect the businesses here in our city is a real important issue. I think that, um, you know, if we jutted out International Drive and made it, uh, meet with North Atlantic and had a four-way stop there would be great. Another, um, stop, you know, I like the idea that we're not going to have the yellow blinking lights. We're going to have the red for pedestrian walkways. We need one of those at, um, Church Street and, uh, Columbia. There's a lot of children back there in those, uh, apartments that go to Capeview. And they have the ice cream shop there and the Ace Hardware. I think that would be good to have a light there. But I think the, the major, um, you know, amount of citizens that I've talked to are not for it. But I hope that doesn't mean we're going to lose the funding that we But I hope that doesn't mean we're gonna lose the funding that we've been waiting so long for if we say no. But um, I know it's a process and um I'm just glad that they're finally paying attention to Cape Canaveral. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go out to publicity.
I think.
You're wrong.
My comments are well, we wanted that, we wanted our two minutes each. I just introduced it. Um, number number one is that this, I have not spoke on my opinion of it. Um, it's important that we come together as a council the same way we adopted a resolution every year or two and we sent it formally. And I would tell people, the citizens, this council voted five oh, as our city manager said, for these ten things. And now the state is Councilmember Kellam is saying, okay, what about this? And then we're just gonna basically go quiet? I think we need to come back together as a council and go, all right, we're in your process now. We're on the the F dot ship and we're out in the 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 water together. I mean, some point we gotta go, um, say, this council, we're gonna try to to start uh pointing in a direction and saying, thank you for showing us, but we're not, we don't wanna go in this direction anymore. Um, and so we're in the the learning phase and the citizens I talked to, I know some that say, yes, let's do it, but the vast majority are ab- are are from absolutely not, no way to, I just don't understand how this would work. And my response is, I'm not convinced that the roundabout is the best solution. I would like to see a four way intersection, uh, the 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 red light example and and talk about it and not get all upset, but just to 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 look at it and to make sure we've got good data um and and to really see clearly if the roundabout is the better option. Um, let let's talk about it because what I am excited about is the south end of the city. The north end, excuse me. When we, when we get thirty five miles an hour, when we put the safe crossings in, we do the tree line streets, when we make that road going right there is gonna make it a safer A one A. And then when now as you're heading south, if you've straightened up International, I'm just repeating a lot of the things we asked for it. This council voted five oh for these things. You get that the the four lane red light. I think Cape Canaveral is safe there. That's what we wanted. And they're going, no, roundabout's better. And I'm going, I I I wanna learn more and every time I try to learn more, I've got nine out of ten citizens saying, no. And so I'm willing to stand in the gap and to learn more, but it's kinda hard to learn when the citizens are screaming no over your shoulder as loud as they're screaming right now. That's what I'm feeling. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll make it quick, but I think the citizens would have been a little bit happier if when F dot came to the meeting, if they had presented some type of op- options for us that, hey, if you're not in favor of this, maybe we can go ahead and see about doing this. But another option, I know some of the issues that these roundabouts cause because I'm one of the few people here, probably beside the lieutenant over there, have actually worked crashes in a roundabout. And I've worked plenty in one at Vera and supervised the troopers that worked it. So there are other options that we can take into effect besides just doing a roundabout. I think the citizens would like to see that option also. Thank you.
Okay. Mister Kellam, do you have any more comments?
Not right now, sir. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go into public participation. And I have, the first card was from a Mister Willis. Three minutes.
And you have enough.
You you can use only one and a half if you want.
Okay. Well, my name's Don Willis. Eighty nine, eight four forty, there we are. Um, I won't restate everything else that has been said. But I do want to ask city council, you made a resolution in two thousand nineteen asking for what I believe the city wanted. And they had an existing map from two thousand seventeen where they were moving International Drive or were proposing. I would like to ask the city council as a group to petition F D O T to give us that proposal that you originally asked and not just what they think we want to have, should have, but go with what you asked for. Give us the numbers. They have all of the statistics that they need in place to give you that. And that's all we need. That is all the city wants. It's an option. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right. Bill Hodge.
I echo the comment. I I do a lot of walking. I talk to a lot of neighbors and I haven't found one person that thinks that's a great idea. So I just don't understand and I think the council needs to do what Mister Willis just said. Uh, the other thing is, why did D O T remove the uh right turn lanes down at five twenty in A one A? I mean, there they went backwards. They went backwards from. You know, I asked one guy that was really pushing for the roundabout. He said, well, people just don't understand how to do that intersection. Well, that's my point. Exactly. You're gonna have a lot of people not understanding. It's gonna back up traffic on North Atlantic. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Hodge.
Sarah Hodge, I'm uh support uh the comments that are made so far and I am opposed to this roundabout. We need to do a better better solution for it. I support uh Councilmember Morrison, Councilmember Brown, Mickey Kellam. Uh, um there's so many people that I've talked to who are opposed to this roundabout. We want the improvements. We, I support Mister Wallace's. Um, go back to the original plan and do something safe. And I know you've seen the story in the paper about one of the era is called a circle of death because it's one of the highest um, accident and death rates in our county.
Can I just jump in and say that that's not accurate? Um, I sit on the T A C with the uh T P O and I know that that's something that has been floating around there, but that there's no data to I understand, but we're looking at F D O T data and that's not true. We don't have data to back that up to say that there are fatalities there. I'm not saying that they're not, but I just want people to understand that what's, what are facts and what are opinions. Um, and so that's not true.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Stephen Stroud, is it? Stroud? Stephen Stroud?
Evening, Council. Uh everybody understands what to do when it comes to a traffic light. They know what to do with a red, yellow and green light. But when it comes to a traffic circle, what this is, it's not a roundabout, it's a traffic circle. There's gonna be a lot of doubt. A lot of people are not gonna understand how to navigate those lanes. I'm not gonna take a lot of time because I want some of these other people to get up and express their opinions, but I will encourage people to go to uh the um Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization site. And there is a document and it's hundred twenty seven pages long, S R A uh one A pedestrian bike safety field uh review and a final report dated February of two thousand sixteen. Within that document, pages eighty five through eighty eight was a conceptual drawing done by Kimberly Horn on what to do with our intersection and where this proposed roundabout is. And they've got a very nice design in there. They've added some elements. Doesn't cover all the bases that we need here. I do understand we have issues with people trying to get across uh our side streets and such, but they do propose some good ideas about some smaller medias and not quite as aggressive, not going uh at all with the roundabout. None of that roundabout was indicated in that report. Report's very good. It's very cohesive. It explains a lot of, a lot of the accidents uh in detail. It give you a very good idea of when the worst times are. Personally, uh, I believe we need that light out there because we need to be able to create gaps in our traffic so that people can get in and out of these side streets. You put a roundabout in, you're gonna have a steady slower flow, but it's gonna be steady and you're not gonna have the gaps that allow us to get out every day. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good input. Brad Pervil.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Officers, thank you for your thank you for what you did. Um, I'm not gonna belabor the issue about the roundabout. Same issues, confusion. It's not gonna slow down traffic. A one A is a racetrack. However, everyone, we have a great opportunity here. We have the opportunity, if we extend what they want to do, the two miles north of Wells Fargo to the bridge and make a nice city, extend that all the way through A one A. You can have nice trees in the median and, oh, excuse me, one minute. Man, you said there's no deaths or anything at that roundabout. At the F dot meeting, they have no data. The F dot person said they have no data because that was developed by the developer and not F dot. Excuse me. Um, but we have a great opportunity to put the medians, to put bike paths in. Now, one big issue is we don't have bus turnoff lanes. Can you imagine if you have a bus turnoff lane, then we're not slowing down traffic, the bus is off the side of the road? Um, then at the, and then we align our bus stops. So when we get on the bus on the northbound side, you get off at the bus stop at that same place on the southbound side. You can also add additional bus stops to make it more convenient for our community. Um, now, the plan extending the median, we can put rocket ships. Imagine we were the space in between, we can put some model rocket ships there because we are Cape Canaveral. And that's what we're known for. Um, and I don't wanna belittle it. And if we make this nice median with the nice trees with the rockets, then we won't look blighted. And I can't remember how many times you all said at this meeting that Cape Canaveral is a blighted community. If we just do those two miles from Wells Fargo to the King George Bridge, all you're doing is pandering to the port and you're pandering to those seven hotels there. Let's pander to our small businesses in Cape Canaveral and make it just for everyone. And yeah, we should move International Drive to four hundred feet north and make it a four way uh red light intersection. Um, yes, thank you very much. Uh, so you all know, I did send everyone an email on the council. I sent it to everyone, the mayor, the council, uh, to Mister Terry Jordan, the director of Space Coast Area Transit, the, are you a congressman, Bill Posey? So I, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Bruce, Bruce Robertson. We have one more after that.
Hi. Um, I'm Bruce Robertson. I live by Washington. And my niece and my little break East Charlotte, they live across the street off International. So I'm going through that intersection. A one A and uh North Atlantic, sometimes three, four times a day. Um, uh, this is my first time I've ever come to a meeting, huh, sorry, and it's past my bedtime, so I may ramble. Uh, but I want to thank uh Councilmember Morrison for letting us know about this meeting tonight and adding us to the agenda and reaching out to uh the citizens of the community. I think that's very important and it's much appreciated because in your twenty twenty one, word of mouth just doesn't do it anymore. Um, as I was saying, I am a pedestrian. I do not drive, along with a lot of seniors. I walk. And I went to the F dot meeting, uh, and I talked to a lot of F dot people and a lot of members here. And my great concern on this, based on the C G I and the models I saw at the Radston was as a pedestrian who has to cross that intersection with my great niece, who's four years old, and I'm pulling her in her little buggy. Right now, I press the button. I'm protected by seven red lights. You know what slows down traffic? Red lights. Uh, Councilmember Brown, with his experience in traffic, knows that. Red lights slow down traffic. I was told by the F dot people that, oh, no, that's not a problem. We're gonna rip out all those red lights that protect you now and your knees from crossing the street and we're gonna replace them with yield signs. My wife was in a very bad accident ten years ago and it involved a yield sign. And the traffic officer who investigated it said, and this is a quote, most motorists view yield signs as a suggestion. I do not want to cross A one A with my great niece being protected by a suggestion. So as a pedestrian, not a motorist, but the pedestrian, I feel this roundabout is not only unsafe, it's dangerous for pedestrians. I mean, I've got pretty, pretty good mobility, but I see people in electric wheelchairs trying to cross. I see people in walkers trying to cross. This is a pedestrian intensive intersection. It's not like Vieira. You go to Vieira and you look at that roundabout, where is it? It's in front of all the public buildings. There are no pedestrians out there. There are no apartments. There are no houses. There are no people crossing over the company farms in Vieira. So from a pedestrian point of view, I know it's the moderate. I may not be a moderate person, but I would rather be safe than moderate. Thank you. I'm going to bed.
Okay. Lee, that's the nominee. I have one more after that.
I went to the meeting. I went to phone meetings. Um, my feeling is that we need red lights. I'm not a fan of the yellow, red. I also have a problem is American Disabilities Act might be called into effect. Can someone that's colorblind that that yellow is not green? Does it mean go? Does it slow down? I like red, yellow, green. I also have asked, and I know people on this council here prior, we need a light on Columbia and church. We have kids crossing, going to Capeview School. These are little kids. Then we need a light again at church on, is it, is it Atlanta, right, Atlanta here? So, um, so they can cross again safely. We're asking these kids to walk to school, walk back. It's like playing dodgeball with kids. I don't like the roundabout. I look at those little yellow things that are up in front of the gas station. They look like they get hit quite often. Imagine if there were people crossing there. Whoop, ding, 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 ding. I don't like the roundabout. I'd like to make our city safer. I would like more traffic lights. If we have the roundabout, how is someone in Harrison gonna get out? Much less Jackson. How are they gonna pull out a car going around and around and around the people you can't go up? It's still going around and around and around. How are they gonna cross our safe city? How are they gonna cross the street at the roundabout? It's called, no, it's not. Yes, it's called, no, it's not. I am totally, the reason I'm here tonight is to say, I'm not fooling around. And I don't think it's safer for our city. Yes, I would like the money that D O T is giving us. We have asked for money every year to slow down, to make our city safer. Give us the traffic lights. I know that's not probably one of their budget money, is for their budget money. From what I understand, it's for roundabouts. We may not get this roundabout money. We may not get this round of money from the state, but let's not take money that the city doesn't want. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle French. That's my last card.
Mia gave you this.
Good evening. I am Michelle French and I own Cape Laundry, a business that's on the area of the roundabout. I don't wanna sound selfish at the meeting, but this roundabout and the stop sign example both cut my business off completely. Not just my business, but nine to ten businesses. It cuts off access to my business, which would reroute people to get to my business off of Madison or Monroe. I don't know if the study's been done on how that will increase traffic on those two roads. But the roundabout would completely put me out. But the roundabout would completely put me out of business. I don't know how it would affect the other businesses, but it would completely put me out. So I'm totally against the roundabout. And I think that if they're going to do something like this to slow down the traffic, that they could redesign it. So it doesn't put anyone out of business. I thought it was kind of ironic earlier that everyone was. Happy and clapping about the veterans, small businesses, yet we're gonna put ten businesses out of business for a roundabout. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Very much. That concludes my cards. Anybody else? Want to mention? We got a minute. I'll give you a minute when we're gonna close it up.
My name is Kay Jackson and I just want to give you some feedback so that you guys would be aware. I was at the meeting and I spoke with one of the F dot reps. They have not done any kind of research in regards to getting with Sheriff Abey on traffic control during peak periods. Any of us that have spent time at fireworks on Fourth of July know that they turn the streets one direction. To get people back into the neighborhoods. So I made them aware of that as well as the fact that. I'm not sure that any uh, studies have been done in regards to getting first responders to people on the riverside if there are medians. So I know over here in our neighborhood, that is neighborhoods that are here on this side of A1A are okay. But those things need to be considered with median because they have to go down and turn around. When you're looking at a life-altering sit altering situation that can make a big difference for people. So I wanted to let you know because I discussed that with one of the reps while I was there. And that's all I had. That was me for me.
All right, council.
Yep, Mister Mayor, I enjoyed. This is the first time we've got given, cause that F dot, everyone was spread out. It was silos of information. And this is the first organized time where we could really. Hear post-meeting. So thank you. I think we need to keep this conversation going and get a working document ready to. To go, just collect collecting the the input. I look forward to hearing F dot's comments report, but I think they expect this council to. To do like we did with the resolution. We submitted it. We might want to change it, but. Think the citizens liked that resolution a lot and we need to stick by it. Thank you.
I just want to say that we've been advocating to slow down the traffic and to have the road improvements. We've talked to everybody and anybody about this. And I have talked to the people at D O T about it also. And definitely we need improvements to our A1A and especially to slow it down. People are going too fast on A1A. And people have been killed. Thank you.
I just want to say real quick, it'd be nice as a council if we can agree and be a five oh vote. On how we're gonna handle this uh, roundabout situation. And I think the council is leaning that way, that we are on the same accord as far as what's. We feel needs to happen. Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Michelle. I was gonna, go ahead.
I was just gonna uh, add to the comments that I think a a working document, a resolution or something. That makes a stand on where we are for the community um, on this situation will be very important. Um. You know, we've we've waited a long time for them to come here to bring us money, but you know, if we do the south end coming off the bridge with the landscaping. I think that will give the people a sense of arrival that, yes, this is not a throughway, it's actual city. So I think that will help too. But, you know, I think we can either stand strong as a council and um. Do a resolution or something once we get more information from uh, D O T. Thank you.
Mayor, one thing I do know about F D O T is we've got some time. So continuing the conversation as Councilmember Morrison said, I think is a a great idea. Um, we do have the option to invite someone from T P O to make a presentation and do some Q and A if we like. We could have an independent consultant come in and answer questions about what roundabouts are like in communities, some of the unrelated to F D O T and Brevark and T P O. So there's options we can we can work on for council if you'd like us to bring someone to speak on those points.
I think the roundabout sounds like it's history. But I I think that a resolution from the council would be probably appropriate like we did for the original action to get something done. But um, that's up to council. Wanna work on it next month?
Yeah.
But you want to get consensus to have them go ahead and start putting something together? Is that what? Or you want to wait till next month?
If I just want to stress again that F D O T is working a process here. We don't want to interfere with their process any. We could be perceived as interfering with that. Like I said, we've got time. And. I'm not saying we're fully against it, but there's.
They collected comment cards. I think those comment cards are gonna say everything we heard tonight.
I think they'll take it into consideration. I think that was just the first of many meetings. As as Todd said, it's a process. It's a process.
But yes, next meeting, let's. Let's talk. Let's talk about it again at a minimum. Let's have another. Keep it in front of us and maybe we go back over that resolution and get that refresher back out to see what we originally asked for. That would be a great exercise. But.
Okay, adjourn.
Yeah, we're all through.
Thank God.
No reports. We've got close to it.
And we got here.